Means the Texas Government Code is amended. I call to order a meeting of board trustees, the Osbornet School District, from Monday, May 7, 2012, at 6:38 PM. Board meeting closed session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, disband or dismiss a public officer employee, deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of a property, demonstration, negotiated contract for prospective gift to the district, deliberation about commercial or financial information the board has received from a business prospect, or deliberation of the offer of financial or other incentive to a business prospect, and order to consult with legal counsel regarding opinion or counsel for litigation on a severance offer on a matter which the school district legally counseled to manage to be confidential. In accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.071, respectively. Thank you all for being here. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? Thank you all for favoring that motion. Please, Judge Right-hand. That's Ashley Nansley. Thank you, board members. And can we now have the pledge?
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, we've got three items on the agenda tonight. First one's an hour discussion to talk about the CBAC, at least the proposed structure, responsibilities, process, timing, and so on. Dr. Christofan.
Mr. President, trustees of the board, on March 26, the board approved the creation of the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, or CBAC, to begin planning for a bond program to address the district's major capital improvement needs and anything else that falls within a scope of work, which we haven't determined just yet. But as you recall, the CBAC is now an ad hoc committee that will be reporting to the superintendent, while the board will not have direct oversight over the committee. Tonight is our, you know, discussion, kind of courtesy discussion around any other thoughts or challenges that the board sees as we go to embark on our CBAC work, and we're happy to take any additional guidance and things at this time. So, once we start and we pull everyone together to get to work, we don't want to confuse people by changing our direction or our charge. So, this is kind of the last night for us to work on any final guidance to the administration. You did talk about wanting to give some specific guidance around timing and the process, perhaps, for the next bond election, some things that you want to talk about as a group. And while the agenda item does state, and in case there's something in this that we have to do, but we're hoping we don't need to do this, the agenda item does state that on May 21, we are scheduled to take action, but you do not need to do that. And, you know, so in case there's something out of this conversation that changes dramatically the direction of what we've already talked about, you would not take action on May 21, and instead, we would just begin our work as the ad hoc committee that reports to the superintendent. But the board does not need to approve the committee charter. The CBA discussion will begin tonight with a very brief presentation from Mr. Friar, the chief operations officer, with support from Paul Turner, our head of operation of our facilities. And he's going to talk about what we've done thus far on the process to date, review the charge, the membership, the board reporting process, and seek any other guidance on timing and process for the next bond election. Immediately following this item, oh, I'm sorry, and I will stop there and ask Mr. Friar to get ready to launch his presentation. But I just, as a note of agenda items that are not part of this one but are a part of tonight's discussion, immediately following the CBAC discussion, there is the continuation of the consideration of the tax ratification election. And what I think is just really important, and one of the reasons we put these two agenda items on at the same time this evening in working with the calendar committee that has representatives of the board, is that it's hard to talk about the bond, the CBAC, without also keeping in mind that the scheduling and the timing of a tax ratification election could also have an impact on this as well. We do think it's appropriate and timely to have these discussions on this same evening tonight, and since we're trying to coordinate any elections, not only, you know, with other taxing entities, but even the two parts of the AISD taxing structure, which is a tax ratification election and a potential bond. Because we know that we have significant resource needs, but we are challenged with the gradually improving economy, but we haven't turned the corner. And we know that, in the same way that we're talking to the other taxing authorities, we want to be thoughtful about just our own work within the district ourselves. So, the details around the taxing entities and all those, that other work is part of what Nicole Conley Abram, the CFO, will present as part of her presentation, but she's available, will be listening closely tonight to try to make those links between the bond piece and the TRE piece, and she's available, of course, to come up and answer questions as well. I have Joey Cromley in the audience, too, who can be helpful if there are specific questions about the history of charges of committees and, you know, we were going back to before two bond elections, just trying to keep up with all the different changes over time in the district. But we have a lot of people here to support your questions tonight, and I'll ask Lawrence to please jump in and just walk us through the presentation that was posted with the agenda item.
Gladly, thank you. Good evening. President Williams, board of trustees, Dr. Christofan. I'm Lawrence Friar, chief operations officer of AISD, and this evening I'm going to provide to the status of the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. Based on previous discussions, the superintendent is proceeding with establishing the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee as an ad hoc advisory body reporting to the superintendent. At this time, the administration is providing an opportunity for the board to provide any comments it may have on the CBAC charter. In accordance with BDF Local, adopted by the board last June, the CBAC charter will be adopted by the CBAC at its first meeting. The administration is also seeking guidance on the timing and process for the next bond As Dr. Christofan said, on March 26, the board of trustees approved the creation of a CBAC after receiving the superintendent's recommendation that the district did have major capital improvement needs that should be addressed, and that these needs would best be addressed and funded through a bond program. This recommendation was based on the superintendent's close work with the Capital Improvement Bond Planning Advisory Committee SIP PAC, which met from January through March of 2012. The SIP PAC reviewed data related to facilities issues during the three-month period that had met, and that those items reviewed are listed on the slide. Over $350 million in systemic repairs and deferred maintenance are out there that need to be completed immediately or within one year. Those are the Priority 1 and Priority 2 deficiencies. The district is growing at approximately 1,000 students per year, which creates a need for additional capacity and efficient use of current capacity. And when addressing capacity, deficient use comes out that current capacity does not align with projected growth trends. And then some of the academic program needs of AFRs would probably be best addressed through capital funding such as fine arts, athletics, and career and tech education. So, with the board's approval to proceed with the planning for a future bond program, the administration developed a charter that includes the CBACs, the Citizen Bond Advisory Committee's charge, membership criteria, and guidelines for board progress reports. The charter states that the CBAC will be established as an ad hoc advisory committee reporting to the superintendent. On to the CBAC. It is charged with developing recommendations on the scope of work for a future bond program, and its goal is to develop a scope of work that minimizes the tax impact by focusing on projects of highest need, so they will be prioritized, but at the same time comprehensive enough to equitably safeguard the long-term investments of the taxpayers. The CBAC will conduct a thorough analysis. They'll do a deep dive when developing its recommendations, and the areas that are being reviewed are listed on the slide, and they are presented here as stated in the charter. For example, dropping to the last bullet there about time-sensitive opportunities, it could be advantageous because of the pricing of available land or real estate, and then the timing on construction, we may be able to take advantage of favorable pricing due to the current economy, which also resulted in us having a substantial contingency amount that we were able to apply after a public hearing and with the board's approval. On to CBAC membership. The charter also includes membership criteria with the goal to reflect the geographic, ethnic, cultural, and economic diversity of the district. Membership includes a balance of stakeholder interests and perspectives, including will have parents, community members, and experts in the field of business, finance, land development, and construction. The CBAC will have a minimum of 21 members, with three of those serving as tri-chair. And so, using the membership criteria, the administration has developed a draft CBAC membership slate that is in your packet, and it's labeled as Exhibit B. The CBAC's work plan may be aligned to the draft planning documents in your packet. Those are labeled Exhibits C and D, and those are timelines. So, we understand that the date for a possible bond election has not yet been determined, and the bond program timeline, activities, and milestones for a May 2013 bond election or a May 2014 bond election are provided, and that's just for illustrative purposes only. For example, if a May 2013 bond election were approved, the board will receive progress reports in August, October, November, and December of 2012. If a May 2014 bond election were approved, progress reports would be provided in February, April, June, September, November, and December of 2013. Periodic status reports of the CBAC's work will be provided to the board through the superintendent's board weekly update process, and then, once the timing of the next bond election is determined, the superintendent may provide direction on the schedule for CBAC progress reports and presentations to the board. And then, all CBAC reports and basic minutes will be posted on the CBAC website. So, we're at the end, and again, the administration is requesting board guidance on the timing and process for the next bond election, and I'm glad to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friar. Okay, let's open up for comments or questions. Ms. Torres.
Thank you very much, Mr. Friar. I was fortunate enough to have served on the committee, and if you'll recall in the discussions leading up to the final vote for the recommendations, there were some issues that the committee recommended that be addressed as what I would almost call in pre-planning for conducting the work of the committee. My first question has to do with where in the plan that you have, is there the planning or the intent to try to make sure that we have the time scheduled for, and I'm not saying it was charged for the committee, but it's sort of a parallel effort or maybe a coordinated effort, that the committee had some concerns to make sure that were addressed either by the board or by others. Can you speak to those issues, sir?
Yeah, I forget the exact name. Trustee Torres, of collateral issues, I believe it was, but that information that the CBAC provided will be passed on to the CBAC once it's formed. That CP, SIP PAC list of issues that they raised, and also, the final report from the SIP PAC will be provided to the CBAC.
Okay, and as I recall, and I'd have to go back and look at the specific ones, but I just want to make sure that some of those rose to almost a higher level than committee work, and so I would ask that you look at some of those and make sure that they aren't something that the board needs to be addressing, rather than putting the committee in an awkward position of addressing some items that are really of a nature that the board should be dealing with them. So, just if there's something that the board needs to deal with, that we have sufficient time to work on those to provide guidance to the committee or to come to a resolution on any of those. The second one sort of takes us back to master plan, planning, and the thoughts in how campus master plans will be, and the information from campuses will be developed in the process or, once again, in sequencing of the work. My concern is if we're looking at a May 14 election, and you start backing it up in terms of when the election has to be called and when the board has to approve it, and the fact that we're now in May of getting ready to end the year, when will we have sufficient time for campuses to provide their input on needs and desires for improvements of their own campuses?
Trustee Torres, that is going to be addressed through the AFR process. One of the items in the engagement is to obtain the campus master plan input, and the timing will be good now because it follows along with the AFR process, and if it's of a significant scope beyond what would be considered, you know, a minor renovation or something, that could go up to the CBAC for consideration in the scope of work for the next bond. So, we'll be gathering that information and reviewing it this summer and passing it on to the CBAC once it's formed.
So, your plan to gather that information is approximately when?
Starting this month. Construction management has a template. They're working with the schools and to get that feedback in as far as the campus master plan piece goes.
Okay. You know, once again, I would encourage you to make sure that you allow sufficient time for that because there really has to be, you know, some campuses have tried to keep a list in their back pocket, so to speak, of the things that they need and that might go into a bond package, but they haven't really spent a lot of effort on that because they haven't really known when we're going to plan for a bond. So, I think we need to make sure that we provide sufficient time for that dialogue between facilities, management, the campuses, and the time of the year. Right now, with tests going on and with graduations coming up very quickly right after that and then going away for the summer, people are not going to have a lot of time to give thoughtful, you know, input to that. So, we need to make sure that the timing of the year when that's solicited is consistent with when they can really provide thoughtful and sensible, long-term planning because, you know, once again, you know, we're looking at five to six to seven years down the road before another bond is held, and so this is their opportunity to consider significant capital improvements to their campuses and how they want to plan for those in coordination with the rest of the priorities of the district. So, and then, in looking at the proposal for membership, I'd like to ask that you add the vertical team representation and the schools that are represented by members of the proposed team. You know, one of the things that's important is we have a lot of community or business representatives. Some of those, if they don't have children in the district, or it's been a while since they've had children in the district, are not as in touch with the needs at various campuses. And so, if they're going to be on this committee and be able to be sensitive to the critical needs of certain campuses, it would be helpful to have vertical team representation by those parents, or someone that's very active in a vertical team that really is sensitive to the needs of the vertical team, and/or parents, not just community members, but community members that are parents that are familiar with the conditions of the schools and the needs at the various campuses. So, I would ask to add the vertical team representation and the specific schools that these committee members have children in so that we have a sense of what kind of representation we have from the schools in each vertical team. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. President and Vice President Torres and the rest of the board, so of the committee members we have thus far, about half are parents, and I will provide to you all, you may already have it from earlier today, so the analysis of where everyone is, and then, you know, we still have some vacant spots, so if you all could look at that, we've provided to the whole board. But if you could look at that and the balance, and we'll go back and check the vertical team piece as well, that would be helpful. And we mapped it out. We had that little GeoMap as well that we've sent to you all.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did it by districts, right. So, if you could look at them both ways, and we actually named the category and the type of, and the school and what they were involved.
I think it's an email late this afternoon.
Yeah.
It's an email late this afternoon.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I haven't seen that. I apologize.
Like, hour ago.
We were all working like mad.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Moya.
Thank you. Mr. Friar, while I didn't have an opportunity to serve on a CBAC before I served on the board, but I was on the 2004 CBOC, and I remember in conversations that were held that some items or some projects or areas in the district that didn't make it into that bond didn't necessarily make it because the research and the conversation and all the in-depth research and conversation about those particular areas didn't happen. And in particular, the one that I'm thinking of is athletics. And I don't know, again, I don't know all the details, but I do recall hearing that there was just, there was something missing in that, in those discussions as far as identifying, you know, compelling reasons for including things like that in that particular bond program. So, as we start, you know, doing our research and developing, you know, identifying the projects and areas of need, we would please make sure that we fully vet, you know, the areas and make sure that we get good information about the needs in all those areas, because I would hate for our athletics facilities to go another bond term without being addressed because the people that were asked weren't compelling enough to convince the CBAC members that it was important enough to include. Thank you.
Dr. Christofan.
And Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Moya, one of the, what you'll see in the TRE presentation and what we posted, while it's an update, a little bit on what we've been doing with the Kennedy Center and Any Given Child, I wanted to provide that to you all tonight. It's not ready for primetime. It's not the final documentation they're doing, but we put it in there, and that's an example of the quality of the drill down I think we need to do on all of these. I mean, even down to helping make the case for people to understand the impact some of these, while yes, it's facilities and yes, it's coming out of a bond, could have on academics, could have on attendance, and there are a lot of other things that, you know, we're looking at. And so, under the TRE section, we put that little, not so little, but the sample of what we looked at, even the impacts on students of low socioeconomic status compared to kids who are middle-class students and so on. So, we've tried to slice and dice it in a couple of different ways, and it's this level of, like you said, you know, identifying compelling reasons and fully vet that I think, especially for athletics, we really are at a starting point. And so, we're currently talking to the University of Texas to get some help through their athletics department, and we've been going back and forth, but I think sort of like how we have this really dedicated team of people all over the city of Austin through MindPop, and, you know, we did the big press conference today, and a national leader. We need that for athletics, and we need to get a bunch of great people, including some trustees, to sit on that and help us do this kind of drill down. And I'm not sure we'll find a partner like we did with the Kennedy Center, but if we can't partner, then, you know, we'll do some of the analysis ourselves. And our first starting point, I'm not sure if you all saw the article, but Northside ISD outside of, is that San Antonio? Did a really nice job in a recent news article analyzing their athletics against a bunch of great outcome points. And so, I've charged our athletics department, along with the chief performance officer and the academics office, to contact Northside, understand the data sets that they were looking at, so we might be able to do a comparable analysis. They're bigger than us, I think, by like 20-some-thousand students, but I think there would be a great starting point to understand how they put that together and to give the board something, certainly, and the CBAC something that's a lot deeper than, you know, what the gyms look like and those sorts of things, just really trying to tie it back to academics like we're doing for the fine arts. And so, that's our starting point, but I totally agree, and I really don't have anything in the district that is tight enough to really feel comfortable that we have all of our stuff in order. And it's taken us a whole year just to sort out some of the fine arts pieces, and we really are starting from ground zero with athletics. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Schneider. I'm sorry, Ms. Torres, you want to follow up on that?
I'm sorry. I just want to add one other thing, that one thing that we're going to be faced with with athletics that we need to perhaps be creative about is water conservation. And so, our plan, whatever we come up with, will get more support if we have a plan that is thoughtful in water use and water conservation and recap or capture rainwater and those sorts of things. So, I'm sorry?
It runs here.
Every now and then. So, I would ask that we be creative about that and also look to how our outside facilities can perhaps help us sell this by some creative ways of being resource-sensitive.
Ms. Snyder.
Yeah, I just want to address a couple of points and then a couple of questions. Ms. Moya, the reason that the sports were not included in the last big bond that we did was simply because of the amount of money. The planning, discussion, everything that was done on sports was done totally separate away from the bond committee. It all came back to the bond committee, and Paul, you can elaborate this and fill it in more than I can, probably, but it was just the amount of money. I mean, the board did not want to go much beyond $500 million to begin with, and we were already at, what, $520, $550, something in that price range. So, that was the main reason that it didn't get there. It wasn't, you know, we didn't recognize it, didn't appreciate it, didn't want it. It was simply we did what we could afford to do.
Do you remember how much that was?
I don't think it was, for some reason, the $40 million pops into mind for me, but I would suggest that somebody pull the report and take a good final look at it, but I think that's reasonably correct. Kurt, is that?
I think that's, that's close, yes.
Right, okay.
And it was pared down to less than $10?
For what?
For sports.
Yeah, the amount of sports stuff that went in there were things like the synthetic turf fields, you know, those kinds of things, but some of the new addition stuff that they wanted to do was not in the picture, basically. And, Mr. Torres, to your point, I'd suggest you look at Burger Center and take a look at what it was 10, 15 years ago and take a look at what it is now, because we've totally revamped that to being one very large sea of asphalt, to being several good quality water, quality detention ponds that actually dump considerably down from even the Sunset Valley area where the drainage from that goes. I personally know that we met with the city to actually discuss, you know, what's the best way to maintain the parking needs and bus barn and all the other kind of stuff that's there, but it's still, still at the same time, add a lot of green stuff, add a lot of... of things that are going to help with water recollection and those kinds of things. So, I do agree, we need to be on top of it, but, you know, it's not like we're not already down that road to some extent, so. Mr. Fryer, I want to talk to you about capacity. You mentioned capacity in your opening remarks, and the CIPAC report also mentioned capacity, citing needs for new schools and that kind of thing. However, I think that there's a little bit of a disconnect when you look at things like the last report that we had from the efficiency group, citing the number of chairs that are open at, especially the secondary level, versus what, you know, perceived needs might be. How are we going to reconcile that contradiction so that we don't have someone waving the efficiency report in our face saying, you know, here's what that says, but at the same time, you're telling us, we need new schools here? And that's in addition to the schools that we know we have open that are underpopulated at the moment. And, you know, I agree with Mr. Torres' earlier comments about some of, some of the work that needs to be done there, specifically in terms of redrawing boundaries and making better use of our facilities is stuff that the board needs to be doing. We don't need to be putting a committee of volunteers in that position. I don't want to repeat of what happened at Burger or Delco from the last time we had this kind of thing. So, if you could address that a little bit, please.
Well, one thing we have in place right now is a Facility Master Plan Work Group, and they look at the whole big picture, and then there are several other committees, and that information feeds up to the Facility Master Plan Work Groups. And so, one of the things we'll be looking at is efficiency and trying to develop this long-term Facilities Master Plan. So, efficiency has to be a part of that. When you look at capacity, look at growth areas, and, you know, look at the possibility of cycling, taking a school off-cycle while you're rebuilding another school, and look at the space that's available for use, a swing space. So, that's how we plan on addressing the capacity and efficiency side. You have to look at transfer policy, you have to look at boundary adjustments. All those things will be considered in developing the long-range master plan.
Okay. Well, help me out then, and I saw the timeline that you got included here, somewhere in here. There it is. Exhibit C. Thank you. So, where does that fall in our conversation?
Well, it, Trustee Snyder, it's not in here, but it does fall along with that. We have the, you know, the AFRs for 13, 14 being considered, and that recommendation will come before the board in December of 2012. And it sort of depends too on when the CBAC gets appointed and whatever its timeline ends up being. That'll be folded into the other committees that are ongoing and reporting out. So, whatever information the CBAC is considering, that information will be available to the Facility Master Plan Work Group as well. So, when you're planning, you know, a long-range plan, you, you really do need to put some placeholders like we sort of have right now on when the next bond election will be, and that way, we'll know when to plan these projects out and how we're going to address, you know, multiple needs. For example, student, the growth, as well as the fact that the students aren't where the capacity is.
Okay. Well, I, I think that if there's any new school component to this, that we're seriously going to need to be able to justify that to some folks, simply because we have things like the efficiency report, we have a very well-known imbalance in terms of seat capacity and underutilized facilities. So, you know, I really do think that that's important.
Yeah.
Who, how was the list of names generated here? I don't, I realize this is the superintendent's game this time around, but how did you come up with this particular list?
Well, we looked at the criteria and the, and the scope, and then we provided, developed the matrix and looked at each district and just tried to be equitable so we have representation from each district. We also wanted to get parents on there as a priority, and then diversity, and just, you know, general stakeholder representation. We also looked at proportionality. Right now, it's pretty much 50/50, and there's a couple of holes that still are yet to be filled in, but once those names are filled in, it'll be an equal split, and each district will be equally represented.
Okay. I guess my reaction is I'm a little surprised by names that aren't on here. I mean, I recognize a fair amount of these folks, but, you know, there's some names on here that we've seen on just about every bond committee or task force that we've ever put together for any reason at all. But there are also names that I know that have specifically been involved with bond efforts in the past that are not on here, and it's a little bit of a surprise to me. So, you know, I don't know whether you're still looking for folks, but you might want to make a second pass if you are.
Well, yeah. May I, Mr. President, Mr. President, Trustees of Board Trustee Snyder, as we said to all the trustees, if there were specific names of people y'all wanted us to reach out to, you know, we were more than happy to do that. Some of you took our, up, took us up on that offer, gave us names, and I think any trustee that recommended a name, you see that name on this list. So, we, we did that. If there are other names, we still welcome them. I just want to get the whole group together so we can reach out to everyone so they can be at the first meeting on time, and we give them enough notice. But are there specific people y'all want to add tonight? So, just tell me so we can do the outreach.
Let's, just for the sake of not trying to call people's names out in public, if they can separately provide it to you?
Yep.
Because if for some reason we got two people or they're competing, then somebody may hear their name on television that may or may not make the committee. So, my suggestion is to submit those.
That would be great. So, the sooner we get them, the better. If you can send those to us, we'll get right on it.
Okay. And finally, I want to talk about the charter. My understanding was that, I believe you said that the committee would form its own charter at their initial meeting or something pretty close to that. Is that correct, or how's that going to work?
Trustee Snyder, what I said was that they would approve the charter at their first meeting.
It's on page four. Exhibit A.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay. Just a couple of thoughts that you, which I maybe tie into sort of, and maybe people that have been on previous bond committees can appreciate this more than I can, but I'm thinking about the challenge of a CBAC moving forward, but we know that there's factors that come in as you move along and this process evolves, including ultimately, you know, when you try to package a bond program to take to the public. How much are you going to do? How do you package it? What are the priorities, as Mr. Snyder referred to previously? There was $500 million cap, some athletics which we identified but didn't make it. So, this is going to have to evolve, and we're going to have to have some sort of ongoing conversation. It may not be in the context of the CBAC, but between the superintendent and the board about what we think we can afford. If we saw the city, what's going on now, if I'm hopefully doing this right, they had a billion dollars plus of demand out of the gates. They're, you know, they're trying to figure out if they're going to go to 300, 400 million, no tax rate increase, they go higher, do they throw transportation, which wasn't in the billion? So, it's an iterative process. So, I think we're going to have to recognize that that's part of what we're going to do. I think as you suggested, suggestion, this may be way, as you look at your, like your CIPAC list, but figure out what your categories are going to be for grouping, because we know that even in the CIPAC, we, there was 300 million, I forget the number, of critical needs, important needs, but that didn't address a lot of the other stuff that we know is important, whether it's the athletic strategy, the fine arts strategy, some of the academic programming, some of the growth, some other things that we have in there. So, as you can get, try to define as best you can, suggestion, some categories that you're going to group things in so we can have some baseline, at least starts, or y'all can start about what's the demand side, and then we try to figure out where we think it's going to shape. It might help us craft the actual bond election language eventually, but there are some natural groupings, I think, of things that we want to do. We may ultimately, you know, work together to shift it around as we move forward. And I think it was alluded to about campus and public input and key points for people to go to, because I know that there are some people that are very interested in this space because this affects students and campuses and parents. And we're talking about a tax ratification election, which is critically important and very important to our staff. It probably doesn't perceive the same weight as a bond election does to parents because parents, that impacts their schools and their kids and their facilities. So, we need to figure out, make sure we have a way to allow people that want to be engaged in this to have points of input, whether it's vertical team leaders or subcommittees, whatever. And I think it was, I think I'm being probably, hopefully, not overly redundant to what Mr. Snyder talked about, but there was an athletics task force in 2004, I think, maybe in that timeframe, that came up with a whole bunch of stuff, much of which didn't get addressed, but it's probably a place to start. But I would, if you don't mind, if you can find, I'd be interested to see where that was and whether it's worthwhile to create another separate task force. Maybe, maybe it's this group or it's a line, so it's not completely separate, because there's a lot of people that have a lot of interest in that. And one of the challenges that urban districts have across the state is providing quality athletic programs. And as we know, when our kids are here and then they go play other schools and other districts and they see the facilities that they have, it's, the disparity is huge and they, and it feels inequitable to them. And then, we also probably need to make sure that from a sanity, safety, you know, in addition to the health and safety side of things, that our locker rooms, which, which are probably inadequately sized and always have been, and whether the bathrooms, I mean, that's always a challenge if you go to any of our games. It just feels like we could do better there. So, that's, I guess, one, one suggestion. And then, an observation regarding timing. I think that's one that's going to have to come in from the outside, because whereas we talked about a TRE, which we're going to make it tonight, we're talking about our bond program, we're talking about ACC that's out there, the city's going forward, the possibilities for joint use, particularly as we're already exploring partnerships with ACC at LBJ and Reagan, but is there future opportunities? We just need to be smart about how we go to the voters eventually for a bond program and find out if there's opportunities for joint use where it makes sense. So, for me, I appreciate having the 2013 and the 2014 timing in here. It's going to be tough on the committee for a little while to figure it, because I don't think, at least I don't feel comfortable saying we have a definitive date, because we have competing interest in the challenge, I think, for us at this time is from a, from a tax dollar impact situation. I'm making this up, but five cents of, of bond dollars can get us a lot of money because of the low interest rates and probably our existing tax structure. Five cents on a O and M doesn't get us that much money. So, it's, we just, we got to figure out what's the best time to go for both. And so, I, you're going to have to just work very closely with Ms. Conley Abrams, Superintendent, and probably where appropriate, come back and get board input, look at other jurisdictions, because this, this is going to be challenging to figure out when's the best time to go and optimize the taxpayer dollars that we're trying to ask the voters to provide to us. The climate right now is very good for bond programs, but it may not be of greatest need to us as a district. Ms. Snyder.
Mark, I just wanted to kind of ask two additional things from, based on what you said. And one was, I don't know whether this is where you were going with it, but I would nearly rather see the presentation of whatever these folks do kind of be done on a tiered approach of like, let's say, you know, here's bottom line, absolutely have to have this, you know, otherwise, things fall apart completely. Okay? Fix roofs, HVACs, maybe throw in a school where we absolutely have to have it, or we run into another 200% capacity lender as an example, you know, that kind of thing. But then build off of that on various levels. And I think that the other thing is that we need to get the input from Nicole and the group of CFOs from the county and whoever else they're talking to as to what the timing should be on this. I, you know, I remember from the joint subcommittees meeting that we had that that was discussed. I don't remember a lot of discussion on priorities and who is going to decide what the priorities were, or, you know, how the process was going to work. But in this financial time, I really think that's imperative to sequence these things in the right order where county does whatever it needs to do, the city does, you know, we do, but we are doing everything all at the same time.
That's very important. For those people, the last joint subcommittee meeting, which is a meeting for those of the city, the county, and the school district, there's representatives from each of those bodies, asked the CFOs of those, those three entities, city, county, and school district, along with ACC, and also to get with central health, to try to figure out what everybody's trying to do. As we know, because of the federal and state budget cuts, the pressure's on local jurisdictions to provide, to provide more of its own, and therefore, we're all going to be competing arguably for the same taxpayers' dollars. And how do we sequence and prioritize that so that we can make sure that we're optimizing the taxpayer dollars that are, each of us are trying to do the best job with? And so, the CFOs are working that. That comes into play in the TRE discussion coming up as well, because, you know, we've seen lots of the press about different jurisdictions trying to do different things on taxing. Historically, people, there's been a little bit of siloed conversations about that, but we've got to be smart about how we all go to the public and not all ask for the same too much at one time where the voters get overwhelmed. So, I think it's an important thing. So, I think the layering and then also figuring out how we're going to coordinate among all the jurisdictions smartly. So, it's a great point, and I think, I know you guys are just getting started, but I think these are things we're going to have to consider. So, as the task force starts, there does need to be opportunities for input and dialogue as we move forward. Mr. Torres.
Mr. Williams, two things, and I'm going to spend time on the second one first that I'll want us to talk about, but comment on the second one first. One of the concerns, and I think it's a valid one that was raised and discussed at the CIPAC, was efficient use of facilities and making sure that the community understood how we use our facilities. I think it's going to be important that for this bond, perhaps unlike some other bonds, that we focus on refurbishing and reusing existing facilities as a priority and minimizing the extent that we, we build new facilities that we can't justify. I think that's going to be a mantra that we, as a board, need to think very carefully about and either adopt and give direction to this committee or not early on so that we, because I think we have a lot of existing schools that need a lot of help. And so, the question is, and as you said, we've got limited tax dollars, so how can we best utilize those tax dollars in terms of asking for support for them? But the second one, the first item that I'd really sort of want to throw open to the board is we've been proposed sort of two bond election dates, and they're both in May. Now, I don't know where the other entities that we would partner with to go forward on an election whenever we have it, but I kind of thought that May was not a good time for us to go for an election from a cost standpoint, that if we, if we go in May, we may be the only ones going because everyone else may move to November, and therefore, we may be paying for this election by ourselves. So, I guess I'd like to hear a little bit about why have we only considered May, and I may have missed something, but do we also want to throw November into the mix? And which November, I don't know, but so, did, and some of y'all that are more connected with the city and what have you, where are they headed in terms of when they're going to have their election? Because that is the only entity that I'm aware of that we, we might have an opportunity to be on the same ballot with.
Yeah, ma'am. I just want to clarify some things. So, Mr. President, Trustees of Board, Trustee Torres, first, I just want to be clear that the exhibits, as it relates to those two timelines in here, as we explained in the agenda item, were just for illustrative purposes. We, you know, we can do this, as a matter of fact, Paul Turner's got a bag of them. He's had them from back in, since 2008. He's been running them 2009, 2010. When I came here, one of my first meetings, Paul Turner hunted me, did the hunt and got to me and handed me a stack of different dates for the bond election and said, you know, if this is going to happen, this is what it looks like, and I want to educate you about this right He's had them from back in, since 2008. He's been running them 2009, 2010. When I came here, one of my first meetings, Paul Turner hunted me, did the hunt and got to me and handed me a stack of different dates for the bond election and said, you know, if this is going to happen, this is what it looks like and I want to educate you about this right away. So that's my, my first encounter with Paul Turner. So I've got a stack for every year of every year we exist from here to the end of time, you know, and Paul can keep cranking them out. So we just put them in there to show you, you know, this is the difference between 2013, 2014. And May was, you know, just to give it, so you could compare one year to the next and see just sort of how it works or mostly for the public. I just, we wanted to do that so there was an illustration of the comparison. But your question is really important. I think, you know, it's, what you just raised is a significant issue. We still haven't quite finished our work from the joint subcommittees to know what Nicole has been working on, to understand from the other taxing entities. And, you know, and they, they have to talk to their boards and their versions of the CEOs, superintendents, and just trying to work through that. So these are not proposals. I just want to be clear. We did not, we're not proposing anything, but...
There's no November one to us to say, okay, what if we had November, how would that affect it?
We can do that. We can do November.
Just one?
No, we can do November. We can do November 2013, November 2014. I mean, we can...
Just do November 13.
Let's just do, can we do 14 for good measure, too? So that everybody has that as well. But we just tried to pick one where you could compare, but I agree, we really, that is a very significant issue to consider.
And my point is, you do in, in May, the school year's going on, it's easy to get information out, there's a lot of activity, it's easy to communicate. You do in the November and I think you're going to see that the date you have to call the election and the planning for it, you hit that July month, which is hard to pick up momentum for. So I'm not saying not to have it in November, I'm just saying it's thoughtful planning that needs to take place. It's a little different than when you have a May election.
Point taken. We will do two more charts.
And you raised an issue, and I don't know if maybe others have thoughts, but I think the cities, it didn't move its candidate, the council members' election this time, they stayed in May, but there is discussion about a potential charter amendment election in November, which would potentially change their election cycle to November. That doesn't mean they still may not have bond elections or other elections in May or June. And ACC is also out there. So would you bring, it means like who's going when, who's paying for the cost of the election? How do you ensure you get sufficient voter turnout, but not necessarily make it so expensive that it's, that its owners on the district? Mel, can I ask one question for you? Just, could we get, I know there's a question about uniform election dates, which is some clarity, we don't have to get today, but just what, what do you have to hold on a uniform election date? And what are things you can have on non-uniform election dates? And what flexibility do you have for those dates? So is that just anytime we want it or is there certain non-uniform election dates that we can hold, things like a bond election or a tax ratification? Just some clarity about that. We don't have to have it tonight. Okay. Very good. I know the, I know we're getting ready to move on, but the thing that I think is most of, which is a challenge for y'all, is when do you appoint, start appointing the committee? You've already got members. You know, I think if they're starting ready to work, you can start compiling, but the question is, when is that election going to be? I noticed that in May 2014, you really wouldn't appoint the committee until September, based on this calendar, is one proposal. But I don't know that you want to wait. You may want to get the work started. You know, maybe, maybe the ramp becomes slower if we decide to push out, but I think there's a lot of information that's got to be gathered. The CIPAC basically looked at that but said, yes, you need an election, but I'm not sure how granular they got in starting this grouping. So it feels like there's a lot of legwork to help us figure out where we need to be, which then may actually impact when we go, depending on what we think the needs are. And some of those needs are going to have to integrate with what the city and the ACC and others are doing. So highly complicated. But thank you all for the work on this. Any other questions on the bond side of things? Okay, let us transition to a topic that has similar type of complexity, which is the tax ratification election.
Paul, Conley Abram.
That was a please come up and join us request. Dr. Starfink.
Mr. President, trustees, this evening, the board is scheduled to continue its discussion on whether or not to pursue a tax ratification election in either November 2012 or November 2013 or, Mr. Torres, if you'd like it, we can look at May, we can do it the opposite way on this one. But, but as a reminder, state law prohibits the district staff from advocating on behalf of a TRE. So the material presented this evening is intended to inform and educate rather than advocate any particular position. There's, there's, you know, this is a buildup. We've been constantly talking about some of our, our issues. And as you just heard Mr. Williams explain, we've been really trying to make a strategic effort to reach out to all the taxing entities to do the smartest, best job for the city of Austin. We met with our delegation, I think that was last week, just to brief them on where we are. We had great turnout for that. Staff and elected representatives were in attendance, their staff and elected representatives were in attendance and had lots of great questions and were very helpful in helping us understand how we can even support them better as we get, not only go into legislative session, but, you know, keep everyone informed on, on our different, on the different entities and what's really happening. We've also been in constant communication with the Greater Austin Chamber of Commerce, mostly because the Chamber of Commerce prepared for all districts in, in our region, a document called Their Board of Directors' Criteria for School District MNO Tax Rate Election Consideration. And it's about a two-page document that they adopted in February of this year, asking for districts to answer questions about support and the process that we're using, the academic direction of the district, human capital, excuse me, the fiscal management, details about our budget, and, and a lot of questions to just guide us in being able to understand and unpack for them the, not only the health of the district, but our thinking around what might shape up for a potential TRE. Now, we have been in communication with them, trying to unpack the questions, giving them information, too, just kind of having a lot of ongoing discussions. We don't have a formal response yet. It was important for us to meet with them and make sure that we understood what they were seeking so that we could give them good information. We gave you a copy of the questionnaire and it is public, so, you know, we've been sharing it with our different advisory groups so that they're informed and can be thinking about these things in their work with the district. But, but the district, right now, we do not know whether or not the chamber intends to offer its support of a TRE for Austin, but, but we're just, we're trying to discuss and answer their questions so that they can make their own informed decision. I do think, without, you know, getting too far out there, that the bigger question that I keep hearing people ask and the thing that we're trying to sort out is really how much is going to be on the ballot and just trying to manage the ebbs and flow, the ebb and flow of what's happening from ACC to the healthcare district, to the county, to AISD, and I'm missing one. Who's the fifth one? The city, the city. So we have those five that we're, that we're constantly talking to and given that we know there are going to be some pretty significant things on the ballot in the fall, you know that we've worked very hard under, and certainly under the leadership of our CFO, Nicole Conley Abram, we've actually been able to sort out some other options and some other scenarios that we've prepared for the board to consider, you know, one-time increases and things of that sort that could help us manage things through 2012. But, you know, there's the legislative session around the corner and some other things that just start making it kind of difficult to, to make this like an easy decision or cut and dry. So we've asked the CFO to be prepared to answer more questions that you may have. And if you look behind your agenda item itself, on what we prepared for you was the, another timeline for a TRE to look at, which is November 6th. And then key points that we keep up and, you know, been kind of educating people about as we go out and talk to them. And then, again, not tonight is not the, we did not schedule this board update document as a, as a document to talk about the arts tonight. It was more to give you a sense of what I think the administration and our partners in the school community need to do if you're, if we're talking about anything that goes beyond considerations of a compensation increase. So if we're talking about perhaps programming or something that we would consider as part of, of a design, what I wanted to show you was a little bit of what we're trying to do so that anything has, anything that we would consider, and I could have put in a presentation on early childhood education. I could have done, I could have put a presentation, if I had one, but as you know, I don't, on athletics. We could have put, you know, anything in here. You know, we've been talking, I'm trying to think of one that I heard the other day that I was like, oh, I need to do one for that, too. But it's basically taking all the white paperwork we've been doing for the board over the last couple of years on big topics. Like we could do one on disproportionality, you know, on over-identification of minority kids or African-American kids, special education kids in our disciplinary programs. We could, we could keep doing these, but the point is, whatever we do, we want to try to show some rate of return on the investment, whether it's in real dollars or if it's in academic outcomes or something, closing the achievement gap. How can we show y'all quality proof that by doing these things or asking the community to support some of these designs, that we have quality backup materials that would make the entire community feel comfortable about any kind of additional investment beyond compensation or, or the use of any additional pennies? So, and, and this is not the final document that the, the Kennedy Center and Any Given Child and Mind Pop and AISD have been working on. This is just kind of where we are today and I want to be able to take updates like this and put them into clean, quality presentations with the backup materials. So any group that was interested in understanding more of what would be behind perhaps a program investment, they would have these kinds of materials and we wouldn't be guessing at or making up a cost or things of that sort for, for a potential platform. But, but that's just an example and, and we think that that would be helpful, you know, even as we continue, as we look at other programs in the district. But Nicole Conley Abram, is there anything else you wanted to add before the board starts this discussion?
Thank you, Superintendent, trust, board trustees. I do want to add that the board is scheduled to adopt its budget in, in June. And so in adhering to that schedule, we have to publicize a proposed budget and tax rate. And we would need to post that, that advertisement by May 25th. And so while not required, what is considered best practice is that the board take action and approve sort of the tax rate that is published in the newspaper for notice requirements. And so, so this will be sort of the first time that we've taken action to accelerate the budget in June. We normally, historically, we've adopted the budget in, in August. And so in doing so, we need to definitely come to some agreement about what we publicize in the notice or else the board has a couple of options. One, we could certainly publish at the highest level of tax rate available to us because the board can always subsequently go back and adopt a lower tax rate. When it does adopt this tax rate in August, but officially the board can't adopt this tax rate until it gets the certified values from the appraiser, which are due July 25th. And then, or it could sort of move, again, move its budget adoption schedule to what we've historically done in August, if we're not at the point where we can make a decision about the tax rate that's publicized in the paper for public notice requirements. And those are, and that, as I also would like to talk a little bit, just briefly, I might as well share upfront, we haven't finalized some of the work that we're doing in terms of collaborating with the, the joint taxing jurisdictions. I have yet to confirm some of the dates, but just generally for 2013, what I'm hearing is that the city has had an initial discussion about its budget forecast and is talking about a 1.8, nearly two cent increase in its MNO tax rate for next year, 2013, coupled with the bond proposition. And that goes anywhere from $500 million up to the total package, which is about 1.29 billion. Obviously, they're going to have to come down on that. So, and that would affect subsequent years' tax rate impacts, right? So they get the bond approved and then it will probably hit about a penny each year, depending upon how level, how high they go with the bond authorization or the bond package, starting in your tax year 2013. The county is going up about 3% in its I, MNO tax rate. And again, it's, it's bond package was approved this November 2011, so you'll see some incremental increases on, they're not necessarily a full cent yet, but you'll see some incremental increases on their INS side. We know that the ACC CFO has indicated that they're moving forward with their bond package in 2014. Their board would have had to have taken action if they would have moved forward with 2013. And so that's verbally the confirmation, some of the confirmation I've gotten from ACC. I've yet to confirm with Travis County Healthcare District. And we've all sort of aware that there's the possibility of the, the light rail as well as the medical school, which has taken up traction for 2013. And just going back on the county, the county, you won't probably, so it has a schedule, a bond schedule of six to seven years, so you probably won't see another comprehensive bond proposal from the county and probably till around 2017 or 2018. So that is some of the preliminary information I have. We are formalizing a timeline. We are working together to put together a comprehensive debt schedule, so, and so that's a little tricky because the schedule is for several years and so we're trying to coordinate our templates as such and come back to the, the joint task force with an overall recommendation.
Okay. As you guys probably got a sense, incredibly complex. I think from the previous discussions we've had with respect to a tax ratification election, I'm using overused phrase, it's not a matter of if, but when. We got to determine the amount, the timing, what we're going to use the money, what we request the money to be used for. We got to plan with other jurisdictions. And we also have to make sure we work with our key stakeholders to get their support. And they're also being asked for support on all these other things that are out there. And at some point, you reach the capacity of what people are willing to support and what you don't want to have, obviously, is organized opposition to your programs. You want to have people supporting it. I think what I've heard, which just hopefully not belabor what Nicole's mentioned, is the challenge that we have in the near term is the city of Austin, you know, each of these jurisdictions can go up, as we know, on their tax rate, up to a rollback rate without an election, whereas we can't go up at all without an election. So there's some level of potential O and M increase that each of these jurisdictions can have, which puts pressure on taxpayers that they see even before they have a chance to vote. You throw on top of that, what I understand, you may have heard different, that the city's looking at a bond in November of '12. Question's when rail, whether rail or not, big, huge issue. And the central health is potentially looking at the medical school in '12, November 12. You've seen the announcements from UT, you've seen announcements from Seton, there's a lot of momentum. No guarantee it's going to go, but there's a lot of momentum moving to that. So I think that's sort of another one of those things, it's not a matter of if, but when. And they, my understanding is they won't know until June. They're still working. They're still working on it. There's a lot of information, a lot, and, you know, we think about this being complex, there's a lot of players in doing this medical stuff. So I think it's difficult, at least from my perspective, for us to make a decision prior to finding out what everybody else is doing, particularly given the community momentum and the expectations of what we're going to ask. But I do think that there's some key things that we need to... But I do think that there's some key things that we need to, I'm going to separate two, that we need to ask ourselves and maybe ask our staff, is what do we need to know whenever we're going to go? What are the things that we need to make sure we know and we're prepared? So, it's almost like the bond. We've done all our work, and then we can, we're ready to go when the time is appropriate. How do we find out what all we need to know to do that? And the second is to what Nicole's question, and I think it's on the agenda item, is what should we do with respect to the budget? Because we've got a budget calendar that says we were going to approve the budget in June. We can, for lack of a better term, informally approve it, you know, basically, so that's the expenditure budget, we're going to go with that, but wait until August to, to set a tax rate. But we, so we know what the expenditure side of thing is before we get into next year. Or we could formally approve it, and then we've got to deal with a tax rate that we put out there on the notice that we've got to be careful about, because while we may know what we're trying to say, what that is or isn't, people could react, you know, in a, maybe, in a way we don't necessarily want them to, because it's, it's hard to message in a notice exactly what that tax rate is. If you publish the maximum, someone presumes we're going to go there, and then you're trying to explain that we aren't. You know, so at this point, I guess I'm going to suggest maybe we don't, because of all of the things going on, that we be careful about what we publish in a tax rate notice that implies something higher than what we have today. But I think we ought to move forward on trying to improve our budget sooner, the expenditure side of things, because I think we, staff needs to have some clear guidance about what the level of spend's going to be. They need to lock in their campus-level budgets and the district budgets and not wait for, with any uncertainty. But that does create some uncertainty and complexity for us as a district. So, Nicole, I don't know where, what that would do to you if we waited on an August formal approval of the whole thing, with some earlier informal approval in, in a June of the expenditure budget, so we, we're all comfortable there, but we wait on the tax rate decision till we have more information from all these other moving pieces. Because I, my, my fear is, and this is just maybe me, but if we get out there and try to set a tax rate that's substantially higher than where we are today, and even though we say it's just a placeholder, I think you can get a whole bunch of folks that may not be paying attention to exactly start churning on it. And even though we, I mean, I guess it's one thing we can do, and I'm not sure what we did in, maybe this will be helpful, is what we did in 2008. Does anybody else recall? I know you, you know, neither of y'all were here, because we, we went through this a little bit in 2008.
What?
Through the TRE, where we had the budget, and then we, we were, we published it, and we end up, did make a decision to go up 3.9 cents, but there was some early messaging about what it could have been, and I can't remember what we published and when we published it. We ultimately end up at 3.9 cents, which is what we approved for the rollback and went to the voters for that in November. So, Ms. Torres.
Just to try to address that, we had determined we were going to go for a TRE. It was the exact amount that we didn't decide until the last minute.
That's what I'm wondering. What, what do we publish when related to that particular TRE? Did we publish anything in June? Did we wait till August? What was the date in August? And when, what, what did the public know?
You published August 8th, and the, and the advertisement was what the adopted tax rate was when you adopted subsequently August 25th.
So, it was 107.9.
Mm-hmm.
So, we published the 3.9 cents and then adopted it at the end of the month. Okay, so, I know I've probably not helped anything at all, but just, if, if there's anything that can, this, there's a lot of people, a lot of stakeholders, a lot of constituents that are all churning right now, and so I think we're going to be, very difficult for us as an individual board and an individual organization to make a decision about a tax rate in the next month, because there's a lot of folks that are doing things that we don't yet know what they're going to do. But let's open up with comments or questions. Ms. Lavoy.
Mark, I'm keen off what you said, because I, I think you're, you're asking the questions we have to ask in, in the right sequence, but it seems like there might be even a preliminary question before what you said. And that might be, do we as a board want to go for a tax ratification election, you know, regardless of the day, regardless of '12, '13, '14? You know, it seems like the threshold question is, as a team, is that where we want to go? I think I know the answer, but it might be useful to ask that question, and I don't know if we have to make it a record vote, but maybe that's not a bad idea. And then, I like the way you were structuring the second, the second question then, I think is, when? You know?
Pardon?
And even, even making that a statement that we sort of put out there publicly. I think in some ways, we could have an influence over what some of the other taxing jurisdictions do, because they're looking at us like we're looking at them, and, you know, I'm not saying we're stronger or, or better or ought to prevail when they shouldn't, but I think it's kind of an interesting question. So, I mean, I, I would leave it up to you to think about whether we need a record vote, but maybe we do need to decide, are we going? And then, secondly, decide maybe a preference of orders, what years? And then, maybe, the third question might not come till June or August, but that would be the size. And I remember in our bond work over time, we paid a lot of attention to sizing, you know, we spent a lot of time on it. What's the public's appetite and tolerance? I remember we had breakpoints like 300 million, 500 million, you know, maybe we overreached a couple of times and, and might have put 700 or 800 million out there. But, but maybe that's a way we could talk about it when it gets to size, you know? What are the buckets? And, and as I think Robert said earlier, what are the priority items? And then, as we start to think about those, do we agree on the priority buckets? And then, how big are those buckets? So, I'm, I'm just trying to add to what you said, and maybe get us a preliminary question that would start to give some signals to the public and to the other taxing jurisdictions that we're serious.
Okay, that's a good question, because I, I'm just going to say, because I think at one point, we had a preliminary discussion that we got a sense that people felt like we needed to go, but let's, let's talk about that part. Does anybody think we don't need to go at all, ever? Or is it a matter of just really when? Mr. Guzman? Yeah, because I'm sorry, because I, yeah, I'm sorry.
I want to hear what other people say, but I'm interested in when, if you're starting to look around the table.
Because I think, I think the if question, I thought we got some sense of really, that it was not a matter of, it was just a matter of when we went, because we know we have no additional money without going to the voters, so the question's become when? And the challenge that we have is, when will we know enough about what other people? And I would proffer that I think the city and the, with respect to its bond, and the central health with respect to its medical stuff, are ahead of us in the public awareness on, on what they're doing. And if they both decide to go in November, it's going to be challenging, I think, for us to go in November. Mr. Guzman?
I think we did, we had a pretty good consensus about moving forward, and as, as we mentioned, not, we didn't say when, but we also said that we didn't want to wait too long. The other concern, it's not a concern, it's just what I thought, is that I don't know necessarily that the other taxing jurisdictions wait to see what we're doing. I think they move out, and, and they consider their, their needs and their prerogatives and what they want, and they move. And, and the process is different, because they obviously don't have to go the way we do. And so, I would think that we would want to immediately start talking to our major stakeholders and see, and see what, what they're thinking, and, and really gather our intelligence, so to speak, more so from there than from the other taxing jurisdictions. We've got to watch what they're doing, obviously, all the time, but I'm not sure that they wait to see what we're doing. We ought to, we ought to consider our need, talk to our major stakeholders, and then kind of, kind of go in that direction, at least to the, to the extent of, short of setting a date, gather as much of that information upfront.
Ms. Moya?
Thank you. I agree with Sam. I, I think we need to put our stake in the ground somewhere, because I, I really do believe that the, the other taxing jurisdictions are going to, to make their play regardless of what we're doing, and, and, you know, the earlier you go out and you, you, you know, you claim your space, the better off you are. And so, I really do think we need to, we need to make some kind of statements and some kind of noise as far as, you know, what we're planning and, and go on record for some period of time, because everybody, it's like you said, with the city and, and with the medical school, there's a lot of information out there already, and so people know that's coming. And, you know, we don't want to be, you know, last at the table. I think we really need to, to go out there and say, and like I said, put a stake in the ground as quickly as possible.
To answer Ms. Lavoy's question, yeah, I, I think, to me, it's not a matter of, do we go out, it's when we do go out. So, I, I think, at least in my mind, it's planning for it, so, and one of the obvious questions of planning is time, is when you would do it. But, Mr. Williams, you asked the question, you know, what do we need to know to decide when we go for a TRE? I, I want to ask a slightly different question that I think we, as a board, also need to be planning for, you know, and Mr. Guzman said that we need to contact our major stakeholders so that we, we know where they stand. I'm going to, I'm going to ask the question a little bit differently, and that's, you know, what are the top 10 factors we, as a board, need to consider and address to have a successful TRE? In other words, regardless of when we go out, what, have we got all our ducks in a row to have a successful TRE? If, if we put our stake in the ground as an example, but we're not thoughtful, we're not well organized, we haven't made the case, then we're going to waste that stake, and we're going to perhaps not be successful, and that would be disastrous for our district. So, I, I think it's real important that we reflect on what do we need to have in order for us to have a successful TRE? That's a slightly different question than what do we need to know to plan for an election. Now, I, I do think that I'm ready to plant that stake in the ground when I know what I need to know, and just as Mr. Guzman said, hey, talk to our stakeholders. If we haven't talked to all the stakeholders that we need to touch base with, then I'm not so sure I would be ready to plant that stake in the ground. I, I think, I think we need to get to all of those folks and then come back and find out what they've told us, and then be ready to plant that stake in the ground. And, and so, to me, I'm not so sure, I, I think we, as a board, have been planning for years by efficiency reductions, by the programs that the CFO has done to reduce our budget, by the elimination of positions. I mean, I think we've done a lot of the, the major items, but now we sort of get down to sort of the area that Ms. Barksdale is professional at, is how do you make the case to sell it? You may have all the information, but what are the things that you really need to do to plan and ensure a successful TRE? I'm not so sure that nuance we've really outlined, but I think it's a critical one, regardless of when we go, to know what those items are and know that we have addressed those top 10 factors or whatever they may be. So, so I would, I would ask that, that we also include in the planning that we have those top 10 factors or, you know, whatever they might be, that we all think, and that, maybe not even that we think, it's that the public thinks, that they would want to see in order for them to support a TRE when we go out for it.
Good point. Ms. Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. To me, it's really more when and how we get there, and I agree with Mr. Torres that, you know, we really need to make sure we've done every little thing that we possibly can, and we don't have any other choices that are left. And, you know, I, the thing that I just keep thinking about is, what if the legislature does something, legislature and the courts, do something wild and crazy like adequately fund public education in Texas? I mean, do we still have the need to go out and do the kind of thing that we're talking about? You know, I don't know. It's crazy, no, answer to yes. Answer to yes, suppose.
Do you know something we don't know?
But, I mean, I would really rather see us, you know, yes, we need to say, we need a TRE, we need to, you know, possibly do this in the future, but make sure we've done everything we can first, and, you know, try and buy, buy as much time as we possibly can before we get there. I, I really like and appreciate the additional 13th check, I think is the way Nicole's putting it. You know, my, my preference would be to do that for at least one year, if not two, and then, you know, really revisit the issue in terms of how to move forward from there. So, I, I need to ask one question, and then I have to leave, unfortunately. But Nicole, how much of, can you just refresh my memory quickly on how much money we get from the feds in terms of federal dollars that come in to, to keep the district running? Just roughly. I mean, if you don't know roughly, okay. Okay, the question, the main question's going to be, November election comes and goes, the Budget Committee didn't do anything at all to make things work at the, at the federal level. So, if they go to some kind of sequestration, what's the impact going to be on us, is basically what it comes down to, so. And with that, I have to go keep my wife happy.
That's what I hear.
I don't think she knows, and I'll be, I'll be happy with the email answer.
So, I can give you the exact figures?
Excuse me.
Feel better?
I feel better. Yes.
I have your budget, but I just want, I'll, we'll let you answer that question.
Explain to the sequestering.
Right, that's a different, that's a different number. So, you might just clarify what he referred to, question, what he's talking about, because that it does, that potentially could have an impact on us.
Right, so it would be effective January?
What's the question?
I'm sorry. Oh, so the question is, he wants to know what federal, what's the amount of federal impact due to the sequestering that's possibly pending at the federal level? And so, I believe it's the day, I can't, it's January 2013 effectively, where basically, if they don't, if they're at impasse on the budget, then that means all programming, we have no authorization to expend federal dollars, and so they would not be allocated. So, basically, we wouldn't have access to all of our federal funding, which are related to mainly our consolidated grant applications like Title I, Title II, IDEA. It's highly unlikely that there wouldn't be some type of continuing resolution or some of...
IDEA.
I'm sorry, yes. IDEA. And, so it's highly unlikely that there wouldn't be some form of action recognizing the need that we, you know, the federal budget needs to go into continuing resolution, but it is something that is of great concern to all entities that receive federal dollars.
So, just to give you a, our fiscal '12 adopted budget, federal for the general fund outside of, is $29 million. The food service is another $29 million, so it's roughly $60 million and maybe more than we get from federal funds that potentially would be at risk, depending on how, how the sequestering plays out, which could be gridlock extraordinary. Mr. Torres?
Mr. Williams, a point that the Calendar Committee and Ms. Brister, may I share this with the rest of the committee, found out from Ms. Conley Abrams about timing, that I want to make sure that it's a subtlety that, I want to make sure those trustees understand. There, there are three important dates with regard to calling an election that we need to understand. First of all, we can't call for a TRE before August 6th, and that's because the law says you can't call a TRE more than 90 days prior to the date of the election.
Correct, if you're utilizing a November election.
If you're doing, I'm sorry, if you're doing a November election. The second date is, we have to adopt a budget by law and a proposed tax rate no later than August 31st. And then, the third date is, we have to provide the Department of Justice 60 days' notice from the date of the election for them to review and obtain a preclearance of our election plan.
60 days prior to the election.
60 days prior to the election. Okay, so, when it comes right down to it, we have a very narrow window to actually call the election, but we couldn't call it for a November election. We couldn't call it in June anyway, even if we wanted to. We might make the decision, we might decide to plan for it, but I just want to make sure that the trustees understand, in, in June, when we adopt a budget, let's say, we that the trustees understand, in June, when we adopt a budget, let's say, we can't adopt a TRE that is, I'm sorry, a tax rate that is more than what we currently have until we actually call for an election, and we can't do that until after the 6th of August. And so that's sort of an important point that I want to make sure everybody understands, because even though we're talking about doing things, right now, we can only plan for it, we can't actually call it until August. And is everything I've said correct, Ms.?
Yes, you're correct, and just to give you some framework, districts can do an early election, right? And in doing so, you have to wait for the chief appraiser, who's joined here tonight, to certify the, give you preliminary certified estimates, and those aren't provided by law until April 30. And that sets the timeframe for preclearance to move forward with a possible June election. So you're looking at June even with an early election, just because the timeframe is too condensed to really satisfy a May election, even if you do an early tax rate adoption. And you're absolutely correct, we have to wait till July 25 to receive the certified values to build the timeline for a November election, and you can only do so, like trustee Torres said, at the earliest 30 to 90 days before the uniform election date, which, and according to our timeline, would be August 6.
So I think you started out with the May-June, but that really would be for next year, because we've already missed that window for this year. So for us to call a November 12 election, we'd have to do it basically in the, somewhat in the middle or back half of August, probably to hit all those different dates. If we were to wait until June of '13 because of the April 30 date, then we'd have to do it sometime in that mid-late spring for next year, and then you have to say, repeat the cycle again in November '13. But appreciate, because I think it is helpful to understand that even if we decide that, we can't actually call it, and that knowing that we're going to, we have to wait to call it, there's lots of stuff that's going to be happening around us before we have to make that decision to call it, that's going to impact probably the decision. Mr. Guzman.
Well, again, from the standpoint of positioning ourselves with everything else going on, I was thinking along the lines of what would it be like if we put the message out that we are considering with, that we want to take 10 factors or factors into consideration, and, you know, we're going to talk to our stakeholders, and we're going to do all the things we need to do, but at least put the message out so that we don't come out, that all the other taxing entities come out before we do, and then we come out at the tail end and say, well, you know, all these guys are doing all this stuff, and now y'all are asking for more? You know, so therefore, we have already put the message out that we're considering, and we're going to do a lot of our due diligence and all the considerations and the factors and so on, but at least the public knows. And maybe, and maybe there'll be public reaction, either positive, I would hope, but at least we know what's coming in. It's just something to consider, obviously, we'd have to plan how we would roll that out, but kind of messaging.
Other thoughts on this one? I think that, I think, better be built on Mr. Guzman, I think there are some groups out there trying to figure out what the public sentiment is, and that's going to impact timing. I'm going to take it to one extreme, which is, let's just say hypothetically that nobody else goes in November, we probably, this year, you know, the city doesn't go, Central Health doesn't go, no one else goes, we probably need to be, make sure we're working right now to be prepared in August to go, because if they don't go in November, they're probably going in 2013, because those things are going to happen. The city bond's going to happen, the medical stuff's going to happen, I believe. Conversely, you know, the question would be, is if they go in November, are we prepared to say, you know, will we over-saturate our taxpayers if we all try to go in November to the detriment of all of us? And if they go, and I don't know, I don't know answer that question, but if they go, do we, maybe, and this may be fair to Ms. Moya, but do we go out and sort of claim 2013 so that people know that's when we're going? Because if ACC's going 2014, we're going 2013, the city and Central Health are going this year, so that we can all work together, and everybody can support the efforts of all the taxing jurisdictions, and we can all do a good job of communicating the importance of the demands that the local jurisdictions are having to face, and that the need for taxpayer resources. But it is a challenge, and there's a lot of stakeholders that have a lot of interest. I'm going to offer to say to Mr. Torres, his very good question about what are the key factors, is that to the extent people have some tonight, and I heard Mr. Snyder raise two, which is, what's the, you know, a factor's going to be, what do we think the ledge would do, what do we think the impact of litigation's going to be, but if we can get a list of what we think those key factors might be, that we can make sure we either can't address them, or we know what they are, or we don't know what the impact's going to be, but we at least have identified the factor, and then essentially wait a month, you know, let's figure out what the other jurisdictions are going to do. We can't approve anything for November until August anyways. Let's see, let's revisit and figure out where we are in June, and try to come back, I think, with respect to the budget, call this maybe, but I think we can do a, can we do a budget, expenditure budget adoption in June that says, this is the amount of money we're going to spend next year without officially approving the budget and the tax rate until later in the year, so we try to avoid taxpayer confusion until we actually determine what our tax rate is? Because I hate to raise it, and then we decide to keep it the same, and then create a lot of anguish among folks, if that's possible. What do y'all think about that as an approach? And staff, what do y'all, I mean, Superintendent Tefo?
Can you answer the question, is it possible?
It would be possible, I would have to work with our general counsel to understand how to craft the agenda item, if you want to formally adopt in August, but maybe do, maybe an authorization to agendize a budget of a certain amount for the August timeframe. I'm sure that I can work with general counsel to develop an agenda item that would give us some preliminary authority to proceed with programming associated with that expenditure budget.
That's, we can have a public hearing, still tell, this is the expenditure budget we're looking at, preliminary revenue budget, but what I think we're hearing is the delta's going to be the demand on fund balance. You know, we would live with that expenditure budget for next school year, we just have to determine whether we can augment the revenue side by a TRE this year, or that additional revenue would be asked for next year. I don't see us going maybe past '13, but I don't know that.
Well, what I would suggest is that if you're going to formally adopt in August, that you schedule a public hearing in August.
I would do that, too. I was just thinking maybe a hearing, if we needed some hearing just to say, just to make sure that the public had a chance to weigh in before we locked, for lack of a better term, the expenditure budget for '13 in, '12, '13 in June. So maybe the approval of the expenditure budget in August is more of a formality than a substantive change from what we approved in June. Mr. Torres?
I would add one thing, and it's perhaps not exactly the way Mr. Guzman said, but I would want us to have touched base with all of the stakeholders, including the taxing entities, and know which ones we are not going to know, and know which ones we are going to know, because I think if we were to go out for a TRE and say, yep, we're going to do it, and taxpayers say, well, didn't you ask such and such, because they ended up coming out later, and we didn't ask them, or we didn't at least take it into consideration, I think we will be slammed, for lack of a better word, by those that would say, you guys aren't considering what other taxing jurisdictions are doing. So to me, the comment that Mr. Guzman made about stakeholders involves touching base with all of the other players and knowing where they are and what their plans are, so that we can at least answer the question if asked, did you consider, did you ask, did you coordinate with other taxing entities?
Ms. Bradley.
Just a suggestion, because I keep hearing, touch and base with other tax entities and so forth and so on. Each one of these entities have a board, or a council, or what have you. Could maybe you meet with the mayor, and the judge, county judge, and whomever over the, the president of the CAP Metro Board, and president of ACC, and just a formal meeting, and this be the discussion, instead of just sitting back waiting? Because at some point, like Ms. Moya said, we're going to have to put a, going to have to plant a stake, and we just cannot continue to sit back and wait to see what everybody else is going to do. Our primary focus, children, so we must always keep that focus first. So that's my suggestion.
Good suggestion. Ms. Dr. Struffin.
Mr. President, trustees of the board, a couple of things that I just wanted to be sure people knew, is at least from the administration side, right? Nicole has done a very aggressive job of tracking down, you know, from at least our perspective, and even in our joint subcommittees meetings, I mean, we have really done a lot of outreach to try to touch base with everyone, I mean, at least every week. I mean, Nicole's, you know, been really in communication with everyone, I think, for just about, unless you're going to tell me there's an entity that we're missing. We've talked to everyone, and even when people probably didn't want to talk to us, we were asking them to talk to us. So I just want you to know, from our perspective, while not every, maybe everyone has not showed us all their cards, you know, like that's possible, but we have done extensive outreach, and so I try to do it aces to aces. Like Nicole's talking to CFOs, I'm talking to the CEOs, whatever the executive side is, but I don't know if Mr. Williams has done the chair-to-chair kind of work, and that, you know, and you could share those kinds of details if you want to, but I'm just saying, like, we've done that part as much as possible. And so with, again, without, you know, stepping out too far on it, I think we have a general sense of perhaps a frame the board could consider at this point, at least from what I see. I think making any decisions early, before mid-June, on where you put your stake in the sand, that, because you haven't done it yet, right, is too, is like, it's too late for early staking, but it's too early to try to get in at the last, toward the end, if you understand what I mean. So if we were going to do early staking, the conversation should be about 2013, 2014. 2012, that horse has left the barn, right? So what we would be trying to do is, if we were on that ballot, in my opinion, you're trying to manage that against the other entities that have aggressively come out. I am confident enough to believe that the city is going to be on that ballot with, you know, upwards of the minimum, around 360-ish million, and depending on light rail, it might be more. I also think that if the medical school can really get off the ground, and they get all the traction, that thing is going to be on the ballot in November 2012. I can't imagine why it wouldn't be. So I see it a little differently to what you described. To me, it's more of, the stake in the ground is about the future, which at the earliest could be 2013, and whether that's June or November, y'all can figure that out, and let us know what you think. I have more questions about November 2012 that I want to walk out of here with great clarity on, and it is this, what if, I think the city's going to be there, but what if the medical school, for some reason, like light rail isn't, and the medical school isn't? What I would hate for us to do is miss the opportunity for November 12, because I'll tell you this, I don't want to see us on that ballot in November 2013 with the medical school and other stuff that might be on there, if they are not there for November 2012. So these questions about the 10 factors, when are we going to talk about those, so everybody has the conversation, you got the answers you need, so we can be successful? Because I'd hate to miss what might end up being, it's a little bit to what Robert said about, like, if something crazy happens, but my crazy isn't legislative, it's like, what if just some piece of the critical puzzle for light rail or the medical school doesn't fall in place? And all of a sudden, they're not going to be there in November 2012, and we have a window, because we didn't put our stake in the ground earlier, but that, it's like the universe has taken pity on us and opened another window for us for November 2012. So what is it that we need to be prepared to do to step through that window if it opens big enough for any reason? And it's my professional opinion, you won't know enough until easy mid-June, early June, mid-June. So don't stake this month. That, I mean, I wouldn't stake at all, we, I think that little opportunity passed itself. So don't stake, wait till June, and if there's space on there after everybody else, and in the meantime, perhaps at our retreat or something in early June, if that's too late, okay, tonight, whatever y'all want to do, what are the factors so we can get on that for you and get you some answers, so that if November 2012 becomes real for any reason, that you are prepared to go through that door now? Because if anything else is delayed, you're going to have the same problem in 2013.
Mr. Snyder's question, Ms. Torres's question, what are the key factors we need to consider and address to have a successful TRE, regardless of when we go out? So if we went out in November 12, what do we need to know, what do we need to address, so we can go whenever the time is right? Because again, it's not a matter of if, but when. Whenever the time is right, are we prepared to go? Do we, have we made our, do we, you know, we as a board, have we made the case, or do we know what the steps are to get there? And I think to the extent that people have input about what those key factors are, we might come back in June to address them, but we need staff to help work on that between now and then. Ms. Bradley.
I'm confused, because a few minutes ago, I heard the horse was out of the barn, so it was too late to put a stake for 2012, and now I'm hearing that the possibility, we could put in a stake for 2012 if one entity does not do something, or what have you. So I'm just a little confused.
May I? On my piece, for some of the things I heard tonight, it's not that I disagree with them, I just, perhaps because I've had a lot of these conversations with the entities, it does feel more clear to me about how wide our opportunity window is. So there are people who might disagree with me, and I'm, and I'm pretty sure, you know, that would, that's possible at our board table, but what, I'm just telling you what I think I see, I think the stake in the ground for November 2012, as far as saying, like, we're just doing it and going through, that there are too many other people who have staked first, and it's, if we were doing this earlier, I could see how this could be a lot, this could be perhaps different for us for November 2012. In my conversations, my read, for the amount of money people are talking about, and the requests that would probably be on that ballot, that's, if all of us are on there in November 2012, I do think there's going to be a loser. Now, I don't know if that's AISD or something, but, you know, we're the ones that really have to kind of get our necks out further than everybody else. So the window, and remember when we were talking, y'all were thinking about perhaps taking action this month in May to say when you were going to go? And I know that there's going to be more critical information about the medical school in particular, that's going to be coming closer to the early June timeframe, that, you know, it's, to me, it's like, if you say you're going, and then two weeks later, you've got to say, oh, wait, maybe we're not going. It's just, we're probably have a better use of our time sorting out the answers to the questions about the factors, and waiting for that information, you know, unless we want to take that risk. And that's my, that's my question. I just feel like we've seen enough, the administration has seen enough information, that I recommend that you don't do any kind of action in this month of May about a timing of the TRE. I do think you may be able to go in November 2012, but something has to come off that list of stuff that is pretty expensive and significantly large enough to choke, I think, the public. That's what, that's what I think I'm seeing. So, you know, and it may, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but I feel, I, we've looked at everybody, we've talked to everything, and I would hope that it's more of us being, if someone comes off, we could go on for November 2012.
Ms. Bradley.
Okay, my suggestion wasn't a criticism towards staff, Nicole, or... Okay, my suggestion wasn't a criticism towards staff, Nicole, or anyone else. My suggestion was strictly the fact that each one of these entities have a board or council, and I do believe that it would be good if you met with the other leaders just to talk about what they're planning or, or whatever, but I, I just think that it would be good for the head to talk to the head. And that's just my suggestion.
Thank you. I mean, there's probably been some preliminary conversation, but I think it's important for us to come back in June and update on all these fronts, you know, what do we know, the other jurisdictions doing, what conversations do we have with stakeholders? If there's some, if there's some key stakeholders that you think that the staff or me, someone should talk to beyond Ms. Bradley's suggestion, let us know. I, you know, to the extent that I'm visualizing, which may not be the right thing, sort of a matrix that lays out what we think we know at that point, who's going when, how much they're going for, what they might be raising taxes for, even irrespective of a tax election, that helps folks look at that, and also the key factors that we think we've identified, some of which I've got are the litigation, the ledge, the, you know, and some of these criticals, what the, what's the impact of the, of the central health, the rail, but to the extent you guys have other factors, please, you know, thank you tonight, give some chance, and send it to the superintendent so we can come back in June. I think a lot of, a lot of, a lot of stuff's going to happen over the next month and a half, and then we'll be better prepared as a board to decide whether it makes sense for us to go in November or to get out there and, for lack of a better term, stake a different date, potentially in advance of anybody else into 13. Other comments, Mr. Torres?
Dr. Starfink, and maybe the board item is not the right place to put it, but I'd like to have, to ask you, either in our board weekly updates or in the, probably the board weekly updates, but certainly if we have another agenda item, to include the status of other taxing entities' plans as they evolve. In other words, for everyone to summarize, the light rail issue still hasn't been decided, has been decided, City of Austin has been decided, here's how much they're going for, Travis County aren't going, you know, whatever, but, but we just have a page that has all of those on it, and the date at the bottom that says when it was updated, so that we know every week what the status of those items are. Because I, I defer to your knowledge, I mean, people talk to you, don't talk to me, but just from what I read, I'm very confused about exactly who's doing what.
And may I?
And I've, I've talked to some people that I think are supposed to be the people that know, and they say, well, I can't tell you, I'm not so sure. So, I, I'm not questioning what they tell you, because I'm sure they're going to tell you a lot more than they told me, but I'd rather have it from one source of information, and if it's you, or Mr. Williams, or whoever, so that all the board is hearing the same information as best we know it, and we don't have nine different trustees getting different pieces of information.
Fair enough, and, and I can't say, like I said, some people are, they have to, at different levels, they hold their cards close to their chests, or some of them just don't know. But for the purposes of all of you hearing it at once, so you can ask us what we know, Nicole, can you talk through what we know today of the five entities? I know we've been, we've been, we have been trying to track it, it does change, but, but what do we have thus far?
Mr. Guzman.
Let me just, one point, because I, I did hear your, your discussion, and, and the reason I like it is because it, it provides a little bit more, it's more concrete than what we've been putting on the table. I mean, we, we were actually shooting for something as opposed to talking about shooting for something. And I, I understand that we need to talk to everybody that, that we need to talk to. A lot of these guys, I mean, I know the mayor's going to be, is in a campaign, so I'm not sure when you're going to be able to get him, but get as many as you can, as Ms. Bradley suggested, but, but maybe we can do a combination, because, I mean, to me, it's always, one of the ways to, to kill progress is to send it off to committee and put it, put it into a grandiose discussion. And as long as it's not that, that we're going to do, I'm okay with it, but I, I like the superintendent's approach, because it has more certainty, and it, in terms of, of being able to fall in if there's an opportunity to where we might risk otherwise losing it. And so, if we could do a combination, and essentially what I'm saying is, let's not wait too long, let's, and let's not wait for too many people to, to tell us what they're doing before we move forward, essentially what I'm saying.
Ms. Bradley.
So, some of the challenges been is on the, the budgeting process that the other taxing jurisdictions utilize. We, we're pretty advanced, we've accelerated our process, we get out there in February, we do our fiscal forecast in December. The city actually just final, you know, just, just performed its first fiscal forecast. So, on the MNO side, it's been a challenge getting them to sort of tip their hand as to where they may be, which is why I don't have full information with regards to some of the taxing entities. But so far for, what I see for 2012, I see the city obviously proceeding with its possible bond election, anywhere from, as Dr. Chris Starfink spoke about, 350 million. The total initial proposal was 1.29 billion. We know that that's probably not going to be a feasible option, but obviously somewhere in the midpoint of, I would say anywhere from 350 to 500 million dollars on the city side, if I had to estimate.
And when you say that, are you, do you think that includes the light rail cost?
No, no, the light rail cost is a separate item that's obviously, I've heard that there is interest in pursuing for 2012 as well, as well as the, the medical school, which is, I think the healthcare district is sort of going back and forth, you know, there were some issues about the operational support, and so that's why we don't necessarily have confirmation from the healthcare district. But I think, you know, I, I feel fairly confident that the city is going to advance a proposal as they're looking to sort of prioritize those projects that were initially advanced.
I'm apologize jumping in a second, Mr. Guzman raised an important point, is part of the initial discussion we had is there's four council members that are up, including the mayor, and until that election's over, that may, you know, whatever happens, might impact what the city's going to do or not do with respect to a bond. And the amount of money that might be the base, which is no tax increase, the reason you're hearing 350 is they believe they can issue bonds up to that amount without raising tax rates at all, that they'll have a bond capacity to be able to come, INS capacity to handle that level of bonds. If rail doesn't go, there's some discussion that maybe the comprehensive bond goes higher. If rail is there, maybe the comprehensive bond's smaller, because they're adding rail on top of it, but that decision probably won't happen until after the election, because you don't know exactly, even though there may be some predictions, who the players are that are going to be voting on the city's election. And I think so staff has got some uncertainty, there's some path that they're on, but I don't think the decision makers haven't been decided yet.
And so, they're treating it very delicately in terms of getting out there with any sort of, even sort of firm proposals around what the, where the bond may be. We, and they've preliminary estimated a one, like I spoke, almost nearly a two cent increase on the MNO side, so it's 1.8 cents to sort of maintain sort of an existing operational budget.
The way Mr. Williams framed it, it was no increase for the 350 with a preservation that maybe they would go out for light rail, is the 1.8 the total between the two if they go out?
No, 1.8 is separate. So, you have the bond election, which has a tax rate impact, which, as Dr. trustee Williams has indicated, it may have a subsequent impact on the tax rate. So, it may not impact your 2012 taxes, but it may impact your 2013 taxes, depending upon how big of a bond deal that they actually approve. So, they may try to stay under where they don't have to increase their INS tax rate and, and sort of levy enough bond debt so that they don't have to initially increase the tax rate. But if you look at sort of the full proposal, it's about three cents over three years, so a penny each year for the bond program at about sort of 750 million or so.
And can I just say one thing? I just want us, just to be totally clear, like, you know, we don't, we don't have the final answers from anyone, and I want to be really careful about how we characterize what other people are going to do when we're not really totally sure what they're going to do. So, you know, can you just be super clear about what we have facts about and when you're transitioning to speculation?
Well, we have no facts. I mean, no one is taking formal action outside of-
But, I mean, an example is the 1.8 on the MNO increase.
That's based upon their fiscal forecast.
Right, so we, so to me, that's, while they haven't taken action, I'm just saying, like, that's kind of like more of a fact, because it's in some documentation somewhere.
But it's not, I think we actually need to be careful on this whole down the path, because, down this whole path, because, because the, the council hasn't voted on that, there might have been a staff recommendation, it doesn't mean what the council's going to end up doing, and if we're out there saying that we think it's going to be 1.8 cents, there was even some reaction that was in the press about council not necessarily want to go up on MNO. So, I think we, you know, right now, we can get this information, I'm going to suggest that I'm not sure it's going to help you all one way or the other, because it's, none of it's certain. And I'm going to, I guess, request that rather than getting you to be, I know you made the request of her, but I think rather than getting speculative-
But when I heard the answer, I just wanted to be clear, like, less, but just sort of a, do we think we know what's happening?
I don't know that, I don't know that it's even helpful. I, I mean, it's just completely speculative at this point, so I know you made the request, but I think at this point, we're better off not going down this path yet, because everything is uncertain, and then we're, it sounds like we're characterizing what other jurisdictions might be doing when their bodies haven't made that decision, and we portray it that way, and it can be perceived incorrectly. So, I would suggest, say at this point, there's, you know, we've, we've laid out all the things, right, there's a rail, there's a bond, there's a MNO increase that every jurisdiction's can be looking at, there's the central health stuff, I mean, but I think at this point, we don't know, and that's the issue, is that we don't know what other people are doing yet, and we'll know a lot more in June.
But, but Mr. Williams, I respectfully suggest that that's part of the confusion here, is we're saying that we have had conversations, and we know that so-and-so is doing this, we know that, but yet, you're saying, no, we really don't know, so what is it? I mean, either, either we've had a conversation and, and we believe strongly, and maybe that's the word we use, we believe strongly that they're probably going to be at 1.8 cents, or, or a minimum 1.8 cents. We have had discussions, and we know these items are being considered, and the probability, but I, I think that's part of the confusion here, is if we're saying that, yes, these discussions have taken place, or yes, they have been discussed, but, but we're not going to use any of this information for planning purposes, then I'm not sure that really helps us.
Let me take a shot at this, I'm not saying we're not going to use this, I'm not sure that we know it enough to use it today, so-
Then she can simply say, we don't know the exact number here, so I'm not going to guess, but to, that to me is a piece of information that's accurate. We don't know enough to be able to say.
Okay, because I would, I would, I think, should try to start there, because I think the challenge would be, is I'm going to reverse this, right, if somebody came to us and they said, the city, representative's meeting of the city council, and said, well, we've talked to the school district, and they, we, they could be going after five cents in November 12, or up to nine cents, because they talked about a dollar 17, or they could be going for something less and doing it for compensation, or maybe for arts, I mean, there's been lots of conversations, but we haven't decided, and I think what we're hearing from staff-
But those are all possible.
That's right, so I think we can give the whole range of possibility, but I'm not sure from a decision-making standpoint right now, I guess, I'm, I guess I'm uncomfortable that we're somehow portraying what other jurisdictions might be doing when they're so preliminary in their thinking, and I think staff is having the conversations, they're trying to do the right thing, they're trying to stay on top of it, and I think we just have to be careful, because we can get this information, but I'm not sure it's going to drive to a decision we're going to make tonight, but I think it will make a decision in June.
We're not making a decision tonight, we're just trying to get enough information to move us along the, down the road.
Can I make a recommendation? Okay, so, Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Torres, so, what, what I can do is have Mel Waxler, our intergovernmental affairs offices underneath him, ask all the entities to share with us, you know, from their own words, right, their perspective on where they are. So, that I can try to do, don't know if I can get it weekly, you know, they don't work for us, so, you know, when I can get it, we'll try to do that, and, and we'll get one benchmark, you know, information point, and then each week, we'll check in and see if they will submit or update something more fresh, right? So, we can do that. The second thing is, I just want to be clear, that these entities are a lot like us, they, they don't get to talk in, you know, in, in back rooms, they have to have board meetings, we've, well, well, I'm assuming everybody talks in their board meetings and, and all those sorts of things, but my point is, we do have what I would call factual breadcrumbs like AISD has. Anybody can pull up our agenda for tonight and look at what we wrote and be able to come up with multiple scenarios about what AISD might be able to do. And, and honestly, to benefit y'all, I think, you know, these are the kinds of questions that you probably have about, that would be important for your own decision-making whenever you get to that point to make your decision, but that we, I mean, we sit down and pick up their breadcrumbs and try to put the loaf back together. And that's what Nicole does, I mean, she has like a little spreadsheet, and she's trying to keep up with it, or whatever it is, that, you know, scrappy piece of paper she carries around, but it's a piece, you know, she tries to keep up with all the different things. And so, while, yes, none of it's been acted on, and yes, we're speculating, I do think, you know, there are folks that, you know, speculated in the paper, we look at that, we try to track what other folks have said, and so, we have a general sense of what it is. I think the bottom line for us, to me, for the purposes of helping you tonight, the update to me is, you know, there's a lot of significant talk about the city bond being on the November 2012, being considered for November 2012. The medical, medical schools seriously being considered for 2012, and there's still light rail out there floating around, and AISD makes up the fourth part, we are seriously considering 2012. So, those are the four that I see that are significant. Now, there's a lot of stuff in between with the numbers and everything else, but those are the things that we are trying to talk to staff and, and other folks about, but that's kind of the big update, and to the extent that I think, you know, we have enough information that says, don't try to make the decisions this month, wait until November, that was my point, I mean, sorry, I'm sorry, June, that was my point for trying to get y'all up to speed on what's happening. And then, and, but fair enough, Mr. Williams, I mean, we'll, we'll ask people to speak for themselves, but we do have a lot of what I would say, not decision-making, but factual information about the different things these various entities, entities have posted and what the media has covered. And we know that the media hasn't gotten AISD data right, so I don't take that as the end-all and be-all of a data point, but we have been able to track some things, and I think we have, you know, it's what we do, I think we have some good information that might be helpful to you, but we'll try to put it together in a way that makes no assumptions. And whatever we write, we'll try to verify with the entities to be sure that y'all are comfortable with the way that we're presenting it. And that I can commit to and try to get to you on a regular basis, especially leading up to, you know, the critical June discussion.
Okay, thank you for that. Nicole, any other comments or observations about anything, the board members, there's, there's a lot of stuff happening, and I guess, just to request your patience, as we process over the next month, and staff comes back, updates the board weekly update, comes back in a month with really a substantive update about where we are, what we know, and then, I think Dr. Starfink laid out very well, is then we, then we, at some point into the summer, we're going to have to make a go and no-to-go decision on November, but given everything that's potentially there, we have to decide if that becomes too much, I think we'll know more then, and if we don't go, then when into 13 do we go? If that's the right time to get out there and let people know that's what we're looking for. A lot of stuff happening, very complex environment. Nicole, thank you to you and your team.
For clarification, so we are not publishing in the proposed budget, I mean, we're not doing the action, the action piece before, was it May 25th? Is that a key, given the discussion tonight, what Mr. Williams just said, everybody understands that's what we're doing?
Okay, so, I think you changed, changed topic, so we're not going to make a publication of a formal budget adoption and tax rate in May, but we can move forward, she's going to work with Mel about whether we can, as a board, adopt an expenditure budget in the May-June cycle, so we can actually let our team know what the, the spending levels are next year, and then we'll make a determination later in the summer about what the tax rate and the revenue, which will have potentially an impact on the revenue level. Well, you know, we know what all that's going to be on a preliminary basis, but, but the challenge has been is giving definitive guidance to our staff, so that they're not worried going into August that we might have some budget changes. Can we give them some clear guidance on their, of what they can, what they're going to control, which is the expenditure side of things? But not publish in the paper a formal budget adoption in June with a tax rate established in June at this point, we'll wait till August to do that. Is everybody comfortable with that? Ms. Parkstall.
Thank you, well, thank you for recognizing my confusion. I think I understand, I think I understand, I think, and I think that nicely frames that it's kind of the end of this discussion, if that's where we are, which is, we've been having a political discussion about when, when to go out for a tax rate election, and not a meat and potatoes discussion about whether the district could benefit from a revenue to serve children better, as Ms. Bradley said, so, just to make sure if that frame was missed, we're, we're talking politics here, will, will a TRE pass or not? That's what those factors that we're discussing, will it be successful or not? I think the- I think the case has been made that the district would benefit from additional revenue even at this point. So we're not having a nuts and bolts, can we, you know, are we going to run, be able to run the school district conversation tonight? This is political. So just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
I think-
From my perspective. And our ability to publish an expenditure side budget and wait on the revenue side of that or our ability to do that kind of makes that very clear for me.
I think that's a very fair characterization is that, I think to Ms. Lavoy's comment earlier, I think we have a general sense of what our expenditure is, but our expenditure budget is in excess of our current revenue levels. And so we need an enhancement to our revenue stream. That can either come from the legislature, it can come from litigation, or it can come from the taxpayers. And so two of those, all three of those, you know, require someone else to make the decision for us, but we can try to make our case in each of those three forms, which we're going to work on, the litigation, work in the legislature, into our taxpayers. So we need it. It's important. It's a matter of when, not if. But I think you're right. The when on the TRE side is a political decision because we want to make sure that when we go, we win. And when we go, we're not competing in an adverse way to other jurisdictions so that we, none of us benefit from that situation.
Yes, and if I may, I definitely appreciate too that I've heard from board members in discussions that this conversation is so deliberate because of the decision of increased burden on taxpayers across the board. And I think it's worth making respectful notation that other taxing jurisdictions feel very strongly that whatever it is they're proposing is good for the city. And I think that we would be doing the same if this board decides for a rollback election. And I think there's also something to be noted from a framing this up for the public standpoint that things that are good for Austin are good for Austin. Education certainly is, improved public transportation certainly is. We're here to look out for kids and families in that way. So I think as we all move forward, rather than sort of looking at the, what don't we have in common, perhaps as if you get to meet with other heads of boards or presidents of boards, that's a good place to start. That this is good for, things that are good for Austin and what's on the table.
And I will go back, look back to the joint subcommittee where Nicole has been there and I think some people have been there, where there's been discussion about we all need to be working for the best interest of all of our community members and recognizing also the impact on all of our taxpayers. And there's been a request to look at the joint consolidated tax burden that we look, you know, because we realize that both those go hand in hand. You know, all of us are taxing in many ways the same people, provide services in our various capacities to all of our constituents, and that we need to be coordinating all that in a thoughtful way. And that, you know, I think we all realize what our individual roles are, but we need to make sure we're thinking about it collectively because ultimately we get our revenue from the same place. Ms. Lavoy, do you have your hand up? Or did, okay. Ms. Bradley and Mr. Torres.
Just in what, keeping with what you said about going back to the joint subcommittee, just keep in mind that ACC is not part of that joint subcommittee nor is Cap Metro and the-
Nor is Central Health.
Central Health. So just keeping in mind.
Good point.
And just to say, and we did, but the good, the good news is that, I mean, I think the subcommittees did a great job and we got approval from all the other presidents of the boards and the CEOs to have their CFOs come and talk to the joint subcommittees together. So they all came together to talk to us and represent, you know, ACC and Cap Metro and all that.
We didn't have Central Health, which is the issue. But the direction was to go for all the six CFOs to get together and make sure that they're thinking. So I appreciate you raising that because it's not a body of all six taxing jurisdictions in our community. Mr. Torres.
Dr. Starfink said that we are not beat up again for not planning soon enough. We actually had planned to discuss this item about the top 10, not, at that point, it wasn't top 10. It was factors for, yeah, for a successful TRE at our retreat in March. Didn't happen. I just want to make sure that we don't go past tonight without us continuing to get that issue put to bed pretty quickly. So what do you understand or what is the plan for getting that done now so that we, so that we have that as a completed item at some point?
Well, the board can tell me tonight, you know, and then, or you're talking about it. It's, is it, oh, wait, 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 I have my agenda.
And maybe I'm the only one that feels like this. And if so, then just tell me where to go, folks.
So it's, so what we had scheduled was, again, May 21st as a continuation of planning. And so we had discussion and possible action. I know at our regular meetings, we try not to have discussions. We try to have items with related action to them. But you could indeed, in short order, talk about it again on May 21st if y'all want to keep that agenda item scheduled, you know, as part of the agenda for May 21st. So, or you could, I mean, if you've got a short list right now, keep things that are on your minds right now. I mean, share it and we'll start pulling that together.
Mark, can you make a short list?
Well, I've got some, but I do think that this, it's a very important, because we may make the timing decision in June when we have more information. But the conversation about what do we need to know? What are the key factors that we need to consider for successful TRE irrespective of when we go? That could happen in May 21st. And so people, they can suggest now, they can think about it, they can come back so that when we get to the decision about timing, we've also had all the information that we need to have. So we can't, we're not going to be in a position where we say, we can't, we don't know when we should go because we still don't know stuff. That, some of the stuff we may not be able to find out. So we may not know, for example, what another taxing jurisdiction. But if there's any information you think you're going to need to be able to make a decision about if and when to go, let's identify that now or over the next week to the superintendent so we can be prepared on the 21st to talk about it. Or to the extent that they've had time to gather information, that'd be helpful. That may not be a question about timing. It may be a question about these, what are the successful factors? Mr. Torres, do you have any other question?
No, that clarifies it.
I'm happy to, you know, if you send it to us, I'll pull it all together and put it in a big document and, yeah, and the BWU and, you know, prepare it as part of the agenda item for the 21st.
So I just, a working list of what are all the successful factors, you know, which ranges the gamut from what other jurisdictions are doing to what are we doing? What's the purpose of the money? What are we going to use it for? To how do we, what's the messaging plan that we would be, need to do to make sure? You know, all those things are going to come into play.
There you go.
Whatever she said.
No, I had actually, some of the things, I was, while everybody was talking, I-
While everyone was talking, I was actually writing down, okay, for me, what would be my 10 things. And you've kind of listed like three or four of them so far, so.
Well, you were ahead of us.
Huh? You mean to keep going?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I said, of course, other taxing entities plans, the publicity, the publicity plan or communication plan. Potential, this was Mr. Schneider's concern, potential for plus or minus in school funding because we didn't know about litigation or what's the feds or, that was actually further down the list. The general public's opinion. Do we have any, you know, hot or cold or medium? The economic climate and the outlook, city, federal and state. Are there any new programming changes that we don't know about yet or any law changes that may be coming down? Maybe some additional information on the impact of our salary gap? And I'm just throwing these things out. These are the things that I thought of. What would be the impact if a TRE didn't pass? Are we looking at additional cuts or programming reductions? Yeah, that was it.
Would you mind sending that to Dr. Starfink separately or just?
Sure.
I don't, they may have written it down or just?
You just want this? Okay.
Yeah.
If you can, if you can read it.
We can.
Okay.
Thank you. That's great. Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you all. This has been a very long conversation, but I think it's a very important one. And we know we need additional revenue to meet the needs of our children and to have the right staff and high-quality educators in every classroom. And we got challenges there. We just have to figure out what's the best way to get that revenue. So thank you all for that discussion. Okay, now let's turn to the third item on the agenda tonight, which is discussion and update on the historical property tax exemption topic.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Dr. Starfink.
It's back by popular demand. We're so excited to talk again about historic tax exemptions. And everyone in the city of Austin is so excited that the chief appraiser decides to join us. Would you like to, hi? If you don't know, is it Maria, Maria, Maria Krigler? And so thank you for coming. We really appreciate it.
Sorry to make you wait so long. Thank you.
And, you know, and it was so exciting when they saw our agenda item. Even the city of Austin wanted to come talk to us. Allison McGee, hello? Thank you for coming.
I'm Jerry Westwood.
Oh, great.
Hi, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Welcome back.
See, he got, this was sort of like a flash mob kind of thing when I was sitting there.
Freeze mob.
Yeah. So they're all here to help and you're, you know, you're welcome to come closer if you like. Just so, and even sit at the table is just more fun when you're in the hot seat. So I will, you know, historically, our district has granted partial exemption from taxation for certain historical, historic landmark properties. In 2010, the board trustees suspended participation in the exemption program pending the results of the comprehensive review and modification of the program by the city. And we've been going through all that this year. Then in August 2011, the board reinstated the program in anticipation for future program modifications by the city. And on December 15th, the city council approved changes to the tax code to modify the program. The district prepared a draft resolution for the city to consider that aligns with the recent program modifications approved by the city council. The proposed resolution would effectively cap the historic exemption at $3,500 for properties that are designated or change owners after December 31st, 2011. Now, the reason why this is so important for us to discuss tonight is that you would actually take action on the proposed modification when you adopt the fiscal 2013 budget. And we want to be sure that we put some of these issues to bed, if we can, so that we can put our full attention to the ones that we haven't been able to solve. So Nicole Conley Abram, our CFO, I'm not sure if there's anything else you wanted to add, but I can stop there and just turn it straight over to the board. Was there anything else?
Yeah, let me throw one, which I hopefully will do this right, is two years ago when we suspended it, we created a significant problem because the preliminary tax notices had gone out without the suspension of the exemption. So people got a tax bill that ended up being, you know, a projection that was lower than what the tax bill they actually got because we suspended it subsequent to the notice, which created hardship for a lot of folks because they had been, yeah, so created, they were planning, you know, to the extent they were planning, their taxes, as we all know, taxes are expensive. That became a real challenge. Last year, we reinstated the exemption for, this is the current year we're in, and that I think was, I can't remember if the notice went out without it, and then we put it back in subsequent. I think that's correct. So what we're, I think staff's trying to do is find out now so we can give good guidance to the folks that send out the notices, whether we're going to have it or not. So we don't create this confusion that we did two years ago where we had, the exemption was reflected in the tax bill because we always had had it for many, many years. And then we didn't have it at the end of the year and the actual tax notice was tired. So I think, clarify for me if I'm describing that or just fix whatever I just said.
From the appraisal district's perspective, we have already mailed, we've already mailed our notices of appraised value. They went out the week of April 16th. And the historical exemption was included in the notice based on what the status was as of last year. You can make modifications and changes to that and you can do that up until the date that the tax bills are sent. But in terms of notifying the taxpayers, we've already sent them notification. If you make a change or want to make some sort of correction or remove it, the appraisal district will always, at your discretion, re-notice those taxpayers and give them a new notice of appraised value reflective of the fact that the historical exemption will no longer be in place.
Okay, and second thing, with respect to the, and I guess was the issue of the cap that would be reflected prospectively, I believe, from any properties that change owner after ship, after 2011, which is consistent with what the city's doing on a prospective basis. The staff proposed that we would do that, but not go back and change the cap or change the exemptions for properties that were, that had been in place before that. So that effectively it was a grandfathering. At least that's what the notice currently shows and that's been presumed approach to be consistent with the city. And the question I think that staff's looking for is, do we look to want to change that for next year from either one of those? Do something different with the cap? Do something different with what qualifies an exemption? And if so, the earlier we can make that decision, the earlier that the appraisal folks can send notice, updated notices out to taxpayers to let them know how they're affected. And then I know the city folks, thank you again for being here, have been working to try to make sure the program's working well prospectively. The challenges I think that many people have experienced is what might have happened in the past. And therefore, some of the folks that benefited from that are grandfathered. But the city's basically accepted that was the way the program worked, I believe. And the changes have been implemented, for the most part, prospectively or a change of ownership. So thoughts, folks? Staff's current recommendation, I believe, is we've had it, it's in the preliminary budget, it's in the revised budget, which is to keep the exemption for next year and to, this doesn't affect the budget per se, but that there would be a cap for change in ownership beginning 2011. So in effect, the program would mirror the city's program and this would be for 2011. Nicole, is that fair to say that's what's in the revised budget at this point?
Yes.
Okay, thoughts, questions? I mean, it's not perfect, but we're trying to work with our friends at the city. Mr. Guzman.
I was just noticing, and maybe this is not the place that it needs to be, but it was something that Ms. Lavoy brought up about the program having a didactic or redeeming value to the student, to the academics. And I don't remember quite how it was stated, but if it doesn't need to be here, I'm okay with it. But it's not. And then, so where would it be in a policy or something?
So I noticed that question's been asked, you know, several times around this table, which is, how do we demonstrate that this program actually has value? That there's a cost to the district? How do we demonstrate that there's value to our students for the district's, in fact, investment or foregoing tax revenues for this program?
Could that be somewhere else in your administrative policy or?
Well, yes. I mean, Mr. President, trustee of the board, trustee Guzman, yes, we've done a very comprehensive document and response for the board. We submitted it when, I think it was before this even, because I think Ms. Barksdale, you asked about that. But we did that. I mean, Mel Waxler and others organized with all the different entities to sit down and walk through all the pieces. It's not here, but I can resend that to y'all since we're-
Dr. Starfink, the only, my question is, does it need to, does it need to be here or?
Oh, with this?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
That was my question, okay.
Oh.
Or can we treat it as a program or a policy or how do we treat it?
Yeah, and we treat-
Do we reference it here at least or what?
I don't think so, but Nicole, you can explain why.
Well, no, because this is, this is sort of under statute. You would be taking action on ad valorem taxes. And the language is pretty constrained in terms of how the board would take action on it. You would approve an ordinance similar to how we do for the M and O and the INS. To the extent that there is programmatic benefit from the program, it's something that we're working with the Historical Society, coupled with our curriculum department, to refine the tools and the strengths behind those documents to make sure that there's accessibility for some of our campuses and even our teachers to access historically significant curriculum as they build their curriculum and school plans. But it does not, this is sort of an officiating action as it relates to taxing purposes.
And I guess I'll make one observation and then a question first. I think this is, because it's an action resolution for board, it's a year-by-year decision. We have to make this decision every year. This is not a permanent decision on the part of the board. And our decision obviously would be influenced by what the legislature does. You know, we've been part of this, some of the criteria and the rationale for this has been because of the impact of recapture. While there's, we've frogged on a couple million dollars of revenue, the net impact of the district is relatively small. Were that to change because of something in the legislature, then it becomes a different economic equation for the district and the impact to our students from a financial standpoint to our staff. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear, this is a year-by-year decision and then we're going to be, you know, the impact of the district financially has been driven by what the state does in terms of school finance, which litigation's going on, legislature's going on, a lot of variables that may change this in the future. But for 2013, that's not going to happen. Mr. Torres.[1783.88]
Mr. Williamson, Dr. Turpin, I guess over a year ago, almost a year ago, when we voted to reinstate it, I said at that time that, as you indicated before, we somewhat abruptly voted against the tax exemption two years ago. And I think that short notice, I agree, was unfair to the taxpayers at that point. And so last year, I conceded and said, okay, fine, I'll give you a year to come up with a plan that, at least from my perspective, recognizes for the district, different than the city. And I think for the city, your plan has certain features in it that allow you to recognize individual properties and make adjustments for the differences in properties and the differences in the tax benefit. For us, this particular plan as proposed does not recognize that. And so we will be giving breaks to people that provide benefit to the district and those that don't. And I think that's very unfair. I don't believe the plan that we've come up with properly addresses it for our stakeholders and our taxpayers. And I'm not going to be able to support this. I said at that time, I would support it for a year because I agree with you. I think we were a bit hasty. But I think we've now had time as a district to come up with something that recognizes those entities that do provide benefit and not that those that don't. This plan makes historic tax exemption makes abundant sense for the city. And I think it's a good plan. I think you guys have strengthened it. I don't think you've done anything to address our needs, and I'm not saying that you should. It's something that we need to decide on our own as to how we deal with that. But because we are just carte blanche having a plan that doesn't recognize the differences, I've had a number of people that have approached me and said, it's just not fair. Not in a time when we have difficulties with our, with our funding and how we're treating the taxpayers in AISD. So I'm not going to be able to support this at whatever point in time if it stays the way it is. So.
Other comments or questions? Okay. Ms. Moya, Ms. Sparksdale, Mr. Guzman.
I sent an email the other day, and I thank y'all for the answer. And, oh, by the way, I will just second it first. Maria, welcome.
Thank you.
I work for a state agency that works with your office quite a bit, so I'm glad to finally see you and nice to meet you. So, I sent an email questioning the exemption being applied to, the historic property tax exemption being applied to recent additions to, you know, historic properties and those recent additions being given the property tax exemption as well. And that troubles me. And I appreciate the answer, I understand it. But it's still, the answer is that, you could probably explain it way better than I can, but the answer is that it's just done that way. I mean, bottom line. But it still causes me some heartburn, you know, because, you know, I do feel like it's unfair, you know, for somebody's swimming pool that isn't real, isn't historic at all to be given a property tax exemption. However, you know, there's, you know, 50% of this and 25% of that. And, you know, I understand all of that, but it's just this philosophical problem that I have in my, that I just, I can't, haven't been able to quite get over. I don't know if there's a way, you know, in the future to disaggregate those things and separate them, you know. I mean, honestly, Maria, I have no idea how labor-intensive something like that would be for the appraisal district. I just, I can't even imagine. But I, for the purposes of the school district, you know, it's, granted, we're the highest property taxing jurisdiction, but we're not like the city or the county or other jurisdictions that have the benefit of sales tax or hotel tax or motor vehicle rental tax or any of those others. We don't get any of that. And this is our only, this is our only pot of money. And so, and even though the historic exemption doesn't give us a lot of money, and some of it goes away to recapture, there's still the principle of it. And, you know, when I hear people talk and I have a lot of compassion for those who own property, historic homes or older homes, not all of those homes that are 50 years old or older are historic. You know, something incredible didn't necessarily happen there, you know. So I'm just, I still have a great sense of angst over this. But Maria, I know you were going to say something, and so I'll stop so you can.
For the district, in terms of how we do appraisals, we have over 395,000 parcels that we appraise. And we do it based on a mass appraisal model. And related to residential properties and residential homestead properties within the city of Austin ISD, you guys have about 150,000 single-family residential properties. In order to comply with the tax code and being equal and uniform, we must apply the same model across all properties. And so when we look at making changes to our model to accommodate the historical exemption and segregating out a portion of the square footage, it becomes a cost-benefit analysis for us because we only have 500 parcels that have the historic exemption. And the cost to us in terms of what we would have to pay our software vendor to make modifications to our software in order to have a separate model that we could apply to the historical properties right now is beyond our budget and our ability to accommodate that particular aspect. I understand your concerns, and I understand the concern about the equity of the application of the exemption. There was, there is a field that we use to apply a percentage of an exemption. Unfortunately, we're using that field to apply your 25 and your 50% exemption. And I don't have another field that I can use to apply another prorated exemption or portion. So unfortunately, that's where the district stands.
I get it, I understand. And I just, and I realize there's not a, there might not ever be a good answer for it, an answer that's going to make me feel better. But, but I do feel as though, you know, there's, there are so many taxpayers that see this as an unfair benefit to a select few. And it just, it really bothers me. And there are some, you know, there are some really amazing properties that have some incredibly, you know, incredible historic value in East Austin and other places that definitely should have those exemptions. But when, I guess I still have some significant heartburn over those folks that game the system. And I would love it if we could take those that gamed the system and take them out, you know, but I guess we can't do that either. So, you know, I'm just, like I said, I just have problems with it, you know, and, and I don't know what the answer is, but I just needed to say out loud that I still have problems with it. Thank you.
I think, welcome again from me as well. I think you answered my question. I heard trustee Torres say that the city does have some ability to segregate out properties one from another. Maybe I want to hear from you on what that narrowing is or narrowing is from one property, but it sounds like there isn't. Okay. Okay, I would like to hear more about that because it sounds like, I did read your email that you sent to the administration the other day. I did understand the answer, so I'm glad that you simplified it, laymanized it for me. But I would like to hear more from what trustee Torres was talking about.
Sure. What the city does is, the way the process works, people apply every year for the exemption. They have to fill out the form correctly, give the right reasons of why they're requesting the exemption. We do an inspection of the properties. This year, we inspected 433 properties. Those that have a deficiency, in other words, not think here of the house like they should, we mail another letter to them, get a commitment that they will fix up the house. However, all of those who meet, who pass the exemption and apply for an exemption, all receive the same exemption under the city. It's my understanding from the lawyers who work for the city, that the state law creates a, an exemption class, you know, in this case, historical, sometimes agricultural, over 65, whatever, and that we're required to treat all those equally who fall within that exemption class, just like all taxpayers pay the same tax rate. If you qualify for a historic exemption and you pass the inspection and you fill out the correct paperwork to our satisfaction, then you receive whatever exemption the city council approves for that year.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
In terms of the appraisal district, in terms of how we administer it, we administer it exactly the same for Austin ISD as we do for the city of Austin. So they would have the same concerns that you would have regarding the additions. We administer it the exact same way.
So regarding the additions to Ms. Moya's, trustee Moya's question, if I have the exemption, I fill out the paperwork properly, and I've added a 3,000 square foot add-on, it gets the exemption as well?
Yes.
The board does set the level of exemption. I mean, right now, we provide 50% of the structure and 25% of the land. So that is what the jurisdictional governance bodies sort of set in terms of the level of exemption. But again, they have to be treated uniformly against all properties.
Mr. Guzman, I think you're next.
I guess my question would be, is your concern the same as Ms. Moya's concern? And the reason I ask is, I'd like to see how we can reconcile if possible. The people that have talked to me about getting the exemption are primarily people that need it. I mean, they're in East Austin, they have homes, and they're genuinely qualified for it. And I would hate to see that they, that we don't, we don't pass this for them based on somebody else that, you know, does not need it or is beyond what the purpose that we're trying to establish here. So I would like to see how we can reconcile that to see that it works.
Well, let me just tell you what I thought we were going to try to do, and I know there's been effort trying, I just don't think we've gotten there. And it's, you know, similar to what, Mr. Lester?
Restefan.
Was saying that you fill out a form, and if you meet the requirements, then you get the exemption. For us, the benefit is, do you provide some educational benefit that our students can take advantage of? If you do, then we give you an exemption or depending on, you know, if you make it available to students, you might get more, you might get less. But the point being, we don't do anything like that. We don't have a screening mechanism to say, this is a benefit that this property provides, so therefore, it's an in-kind benefit back to the district, and so we're going to provide you a benefit. We basically are going to give, once they meet the criteria, the same benefit to everyone. And so there's some folks that truly do partner with the district and make their homes available and their properties available so that our students can learn from them. But there are others that just benefit from it, and we'll never see any educational benefit for the district. That to me, and maybe that's the same thing that Ms. Moya's mentioning, I don't know, but that to me is unfair. And I thought that's what we were going to try to accomplish. But as I read this, I don't see that accomplishing it.
So is there any way to get there?
If there was a way for us to basically have a form that allowed us to say, hey, are you going to somehow work with our history department or social studies department and make your property available? If so, then that would be what I'd like to see in sort of an ideal plan. But as I say, I don't think we were able to get there this past year.
We've got a couple of hands up. So when you're, you're, are you, do you differentiate a lot between commercial and residential?
Not if the commercial provides benefit to the district.
Same criteria for both, commercial or residential?
Yeah, right.
Okay. I saw two hands up. So who, Ms. Moya, and then we'll go.
Well, the Historical Society is already engaged in communicating with those historical property owners to do some of what you're talking about. I don't know, I mean, it certainly isn't all 500 properties or whatever it is, but there are some that are actively involved in working with our curriculum offices and doing some things, whether it be on CD or whatever. So there's a little bit of that going on already. And they, I mean, they took what we said in a meeting and turned it into action and acted on it right away. My issue is not exactly what, I was going to say something else. I was going to say Commissioner Torres, trustee Torres. Could be Commissioner, I guess. And I don't know how that, I don't know why that happened. I'm not sure. Anyhow. So my issue is more about fairness of getting an exemption called historic property when it's not necessarily historic. What makes it historic? You know, it's because it's 50 years old? The house I grew up in is over 50 years old, and I don't know what would be historic about it, you know, unless, you know, the fact that the first Hispanic elected official in Travis County lived there. I mean, I don't know. But my point is, is that I'm not sure that every, every property that's 50 years old is historic and should have a historic exemption. Now, if there is, if there are property owners in parts of town that are being, you know, that are being forced out of their homes because the property values are going so high due to gentrification and whatever else, you know, and it's forcing people out of their homes, and is there some kind of a, some kind of an exemption or tax break that they could receive? Maybe that's different from a historic exemption. I'm not sure. So, because, because some of what you were talking about, Mr. Guzman, made me think of that. You know, that there, that that phenomenon is happening as well, that so many of our original homeowners or families in East Austin and other parts of town are being forced out of their homes because the property values are going so high because of gentrification and other things, and they can't afford their homes anymore because they're on fixed incomes. And so that may be another issue that we need to tackle, I don't know. But I just, the whole historic, I mean, I can see the Pease Mansion, I can see, you know, all these other things, all these other properties that I, you know, I don't have a qualm with, with having that kind of an exemption. But somebody who just knows how to game the system and gets a property tax exemption bothers me. And they don't give anything back to anybody, they just take. And then there's those that came before us and said, well, you know, I wouldn't have bought this house if I didn't know I was going to get this exemption. Otherwise, I wouldn't have bought the house. Well, okay. You know, so, I don't know. So, we're not really talking about the same thing, but we are because we're talking about fairness and equity and equality.
I was just going to respond to trustee Torres about sort of setting up the infrastructure to support assessing properties for the educational value. And what we just determined is that we just don't have the administrative capacity, which is why we've partnered with the city to provide some of those services. You know, you can just, you know, Jerry, you can talk about the apparatus as a landmark commission. There's a whole planning staff devoted to that particular area. And for us to expend resources to manage a program that is fairly insignificant when you look at the size of our budget and resource. I did spend a day with the city looking at applications just to do some spot checking to see, you know, how the programs administer, but the enormous amount of time associated with such a, when I look at sort of quantitatively in terms of the areas of our exposure or financial landscape, it just, to have the resource capacity to look at, you know, manage 500 properties every year on an annual basis, you just have to decide whether or not we want to assign resources towards that. We realize that there's some initial educational benefit. We're working with the Historical Society to try to leverage more of the properties, integrate those, the historic piece into our curriculum. Again, some homes may not be historical, but they have social significance. And sort of doing that subjective assessment and a value of the properties to the educational system is just, it would require resource needs that we don't currently have today. And so, which is why we're relying on the city. We've talked to them about maybe modifying, adding a checkbox to future applications. And there may be some opportunity for that. But in terms of really managing a program as the city does to really look at the educational components, I would say that we certainly don't have the resource capacity to do that.
If I could just briefly add, all these properties, the 433 there on this list, are not just over 50 years old. That is one of the criteria, but it's not the sole. That is one of the criteria, but it's not the sole criteria. We have a professional staff that have reviewed them using nationally accepted criteria. They've been modified locally. They've all been reviewed by the Historic Landmark Commission, the Planning Commission, and each one of them has been approved, sometimes since 1974, by the city council as being a landmark. So it's more than just the age of the structure. Each one of these has received a designation by the council individually using criteria.
Ms. Parkes, I have a question. I wanted to go back to, I think it was at one point, there was some discussion that you guys were going to have online system, I think, that was going to show every property, and so somebody could go look at every property in this city that's been designated as historical and have some information about that property. Do you all have that system? Is it up and running? And the basis for its designation and things like that?
Yes, we are working on that. It's been a project that we've been working on with the University of Texas. It's what's being called the WikiWeb Tool, Wiki Historic Survey Web Tool. It's going to be a system that will not just have the individually landmarked properties, but will have, provide an opportunity for the public to identify all properties within the city that could potentially be contributing to local historic districts or might be eligible for future landmarking. And it'll be something that will have a photograph, architectural descriptions of those properties. And in the case of the city landmarks, would have the ordinance that designated them and can have a narrative as well. So we're working on them, but it is a process, you know, that takes some time. But we're hoping to do a launch of that tool to make it available to the general public later this month. And we'll have quite a bit of that information on it. But we'll continue to be working on it over the coming months.
Okay. Ms. Parkes, thank you.
Thanks, I have two questions. The first is for the resolution that we're looking at, the draft resolution. President Williams, you mentioned that the district will review this policy or this exemption year after year. Is there a termination, is there a term date in the resolution? Or is it just open until the board takes action again?
Well, I think, I think we have to approve a resolution every year to grant the tax abatement. So it's required. So I think in effect, I mean, if we don't approve it next year, if we did, hypothetically, if we did it last year and didn't do it this year.
So it just expires?
It expires, but it's basically, it requires an annual renewal, in effect, by action of the board.
Okay, I just, I didn't see that part here. So the second question was, and I think this board has asked this question a bunch, but I just wanted to hear the answer, just so I can be really clear on it. Do you foresee any opportunity in the future to expunge properties that we all know, sort of game the system, to trust Ms. Moya's question? I mean, those things have been under law, I mean, the issue raised, lawsuit, it raised a bunch of things, review of the program, approving the program. Is it, once you're in, you're in? I know there's an annual review, and as long as you're meeting those standards, you're in. But does the city foresee taking any action to sort of clean it up down to that sort of bone level to where entities like us can be more comfortable with the program? And not asking other taxpayers to support folks that we know game the system?
Well, as you mentioned, there is that annual review that we make sure that they're maintaining the property, et cetera. They do have to remember to request it every year. Each one of the properties, the historic landmark status, again, is determined by the city council. It's essentially a zoning category. At any time, the city council could go ahead and change that on any property within the city to remove that designation if they so desired. So yes, it's possible. You know, I guess it would have to be handled on a case-by-case basis, depending on what the situation was.
Okay, but there's no movement underfoot to have that happen? Just to have the council, you know, any recommendation or anything to have staff or anyone to say, let's just clean this up, clear out the underbrush, and get to the properties that the community can know, understand, get behind?
Not at this time. I'm not aware of any desire to do that. Like I said, the council has, you know, considered each one of these cases individually, and each one of the cases on this list, properties on this list, has been determined by the city council to meet that criteria. If for some reason they felt someone did meet that criteria, or that a previous decision was made erroneously, they have the opportunity, as the city council, to change that.
Chairman, I say, this may not be fair, but so you can change what I'm about to say. But my sense was when this whole issue came about, the historical properties, landmark commission, all that stuff, they had a chance to go back and potentially revisit prior properties, and they chose to effectively grandfather all of them and then implement going forward. And then I guess they could take it on a case-by-case basis. But there was, I'm going to say by, that may have been explicit or implicit, but a conscious decision to not go back and make an individual case-by-case analysis.
I think they did two things. They, one, tightened the criteria, made it tougher for new cases to come through. We've only had two new ones in the past year, added to this list that you see here. In addition, they put the cap on it, so that when these properties do change hands, the exemption for some people will be drastically less than what they are receiving today. Again, that's going to take some time as the properties change ownership.
So I think, Ms. Parkes, I don't think they went back, and I think there's a conscious decision to not go back, and even though there's some cases that probably a lot of folks could say, that one probably shouldn't, maybe shouldn't have made it, got slipped through when all this stuff was a little fuzzy, I think they made a conscious decision to not go back and try to revisit that and basically implied the criteria prospectively and effectively grandfathered the ones that are already in. And I guess you could always have the case that they, just like us, can make a decision whether to keep it or not. But there doesn't seem to be effort to do that. So, but is there, I guess the choice could be, not that I oppose it, but the district conceivably could go and let you know, property by property, make that one zero, make this one 25%, you know? We could do that. But that goes back to capacity and the ability to make that assessment to find out, how do we actually do that, and which ones we decide are in or out? And it's just, that would be enormously time-consuming for relatively marginal impact. But I guess in theory, that's the way we could do it. Even if the city kept it as historical, we could make a decision to not grant an exemption to a specific property. But it just feels like owners and complex. Mr. Guzman, I'll come back to Ms. Moya.
I had the same question.
Ms. Moya.
So I think I asked this when, early on, months ago, when we were talking about your form. And I was wondering if we could place a couple of questions or criteria on there that you guys could just take, okay, so here's questions 15 and through 18, these are yours. Here's the stuff, you know? And then we would decide, you know, yes or no, I suppose. I mean, it's not like a whole thing like what they have. But I was wondering if maybe you all could add something to your form and then, you know, provide us with the data, and then we could make those determinations on our own. And I don't remember whatever came of that.
We would be happy to do whatever we could to help the district with whatever decision they need to make.
So you think about just prospective cases as a question, like what's the educational significance of this property or something?
Yeah, I mean, something. Whatever three or four questions we would want to ask, or one or two, whatever it is, that might give us information enough that we would be able to say yes or no, and then we could tell, you know, the Maria staff to, yes on this one, no on that one, yes on these five, you know, and go from there, maybe. WikiWeb.
The We the State WikiWeb. So, but I think, I mean, just to make sure I'm understanding, because the challenge, the caps, there's a cap for new properties. Is that $2,500 for new properties?
Yes.
So when you think about that effort, that's, they're limited to that level of property tax exemption for new properties.
Using the formula, that would be the maximum.
We're proposing 35. So, but I mean, we think about if we ask that, and they've only done a couple in the last year. I'm just trying to think about the complexity. And so then we ask them to provide questions. We want to look at it because we're trying to decide if we're going to individually judge whether we're going to give the 30, maybe up to 3,500 or not on that property. And that could take a lot of time, and you got to come to the board. And we're sitting there processing over potentially a $3,500 or 3,000 or 2,000 or something like that, it could be a $1,000 tax abatement. That just might be, we just got to be careful that we don't get into something that's requiring an enormous amount of board and staff time for a relatively small amount of money. And, you know, do we really instead rely on what the city has put in in terms of their processes to make sure that they're granting really properties that seem to very tightly meet the criteria? And then we just rely on that? So I understand what you're saying, Ms. Moya, but I just want to make sure that we've got to be careful that we don't ask them to do something that we then look at, that we just look at it and say, boy, that's going to be so time-consuming for a really nominal amount of money.
Well, maybe this is something we work on for next year. You know, that it's not something that, for right now, but maybe it's for next year. But I think the thing we need to remember is that there are a whole lot more taxpayers and 433 property owners in Austin ISD's jurisdiction. And quite a few of them are, you know, not happy about this because it does feel unfair to them. And so, you know, at what point do you put a price tag on goodwill, taxpayer support, whatever else you want to call it, you know, for the benefit of a few who happen to have enough financial resources to buy a home in the right part of town where you can qualify for, with, you know, several different criteria? And I realize 50 years old isn't the only criteria, it's just the first one that came to mind. That, you know, I mean, it does seem unfair. And so I just, you know, at what point, you know, what, are we saying that one thing is more valuable than the other, or one type of property owner is more valuable than another? I mean, what are we saying? You know, because it's, you know, I realize it's not a whole lot of money. I don't remember what it was, 300,000 or something. I mean, I can't remember. But...
I, I mean, it was $95,000 on the MNO side. So, you know, and then on the INS, it was close to around 250,000 in terms of what we realized.
After recapture.
After recapture. And the city, again, it has a commission, it has robust staff and department that reviews the application. When it gets to the tipping point, when you're hiring people to review a program and there's no real revenue potential, if there's that kind of insecurity, then I would suggest that you move towards not having the program because it just doesn't, it doesn't, the cost benefit just doesn't, is not rational at that point. If you're going to expand and build some support around reviewing these applications every year, 500-plus, it would, it's not something that someone can do in their spare time with what we have to do today in terms of deliverables and just maintaining our existing operations.
Okay, well, that's fair. I just, you know, I just, you know, wanted to say that, you know, I realize it's not a whole lot of money, but by the same token, you know, where are we putting value? And are we putting more value on one taxpayer group versus another? And I don't, I don't think we intend to do that at all.
Ms. Guzman.
So essentially, what we would do is not, let's say we were in that direction, and we didn't approve it, that means that the people that are bona fide historically properties and are, want to do our program, they wouldn't be able to. We wouldn't have the exemption. So essentially, well, we would be penalizing them. So, and I would guess that we need to give them a good explanation as to why, which all has been discussed here necessarily. But nonetheless, I think that those particular people do deserve it. And if they're going to be penalized for people that are gaming the system or taking advantage of the situation, they need to understand, I guess, why we're not able to do it. If, in fact, we don't do it. And I'm not saying I wouldn't support it, I'm just saying that there's some considerations here to be had. Thank you.
And I'm not sure why, if I'm correct on this, Ms. Abrams, why we're the only district in Texas that does this? Is that correct?
Sorry, we're not the only district in the state who does this.
How many others are there?
I don't know. There's no real repository of who's doing historic because the comptroller treats it sort of as one category as they capture all property tax levels and rates and exemptions. But we've heard anecdotally of other districts that do have some level of exemptions. I think doesn't Flugerville, some of, one of our neighbors, they may have a few properties here and there as at one point in time that they provided historic provisions. But I am finding that we are not the only school district to provide historic exemption.
But it's not pervasive?
No, it's not.
So, not sure why we do that, but I also want to remind us of the previous discussion of going out for a TRE and asking people to pay more taxes while we grant others a tax exemption. That's going to be difficult to justify to all the people we're going to raise their taxes for, to provide tax relief for a small number. So that's just something I think we need to think about as we go, as we continue to have discussions to have an increase in the tax rate.
Just real quick, Mr. President, because I think that, obviously, we have to do, do a good business analysis of, make a good business case. But, you know, as much as I sometimes try to forget it, one of the reasons that we probably do it in Austin and it's not done across the board is for the same reason that people love to say that Austin is weird. Really. And then the other argument is, Austin is Austin. It's the Austin way. So all those reasons, really, while they're just words and madras or mottos or whatever labels, they mean something in Austin and to people in Austin. So I think that's probably a lot of the reason that we do that.
Any other comments? We got, we've kept you all really late, and I apologize, but I really thank you for being here. We need to really try to come to some idea about what we want to do, and for lots of reasons. One, because as Nicole talked about, we've got a $700 million budget and plus hundreds of thousands, $100 million and other thing else, it's by billion dollars in real estate. And the amount of time she's spending on something from an O and M standpoint is $95,000 to us net right now, $200,000 on INS. So I think we've got to decide if we either do it or don't do it, you know? Because it's taken so much time for staff. We've had, this is, we've had several discussions on this. And just, we need to just decide and give guidance. And we do it every year. We got to decide every year, and things could change. We're not scheduled for action tonight, but we need to give guidance to staff pretty clearly to say whether we go or don't go. There are mixed feelings about this across the district. There are issues that lots of people are going to raise about whether to do this or not do this. For me personally, I'm going to, as long as we have recapture and we can work with our city, I'm going to continue to support it because we're talking about collecting a million eight or a million nine of money from our local taxpayers and sending it to the state. We don't get to keep it here. But we have to make, in exchange for that, we've got to, I believe, which I think our team's working, it won't be every individual property, but I think the Heritage Society and the historical property and the friends of the city and the commercial are really working to try to make sure that for the net that we lose, that we get value for that, the $300,000, that we're getting at least $300,000 of value for the district. And I think we are. And I think we're also contributing with our friends from the city who give us millions in terms of support, you know, and effort and after-school programs and lots of things that they do to help us. So this is one, we're helping them. But if it changes, the school finance laws change, where it becomes a $2.1 million hit, then my position would probably change. But I think we need to give guidance to them, both to the appraisal people, so they know what, they got to give notices out, to the city people, so they can give guidance to the people that try to apply for the program. And we need to let all the, you know, all of us, our staff, go back to work on something else that's actually of much more material nature to the district. So we're not posted for action, but I guess maybe this question is, can we, I don't know if anybody else needs to get anything, but I think we need to actually take a decision as a board, either up or down, on whether we want to keep this. We schedule for action on this item? So I think next, on the 21st, we just got to decide whether we're going to keep this or not keep this for next school year. And then understand that if we keep it for next school year, we can make the decision again a year from now, because that's the nature of what we have to do. Ms. Lavoy.
I was going to hold my thoughts since we're not scheduled for action, but I just wanted to, I was going to come in behind you and support you, that I think we've devoted very good thought time to this. And I think we know what the issues are. And so I'm where you are for this year. And certainly, if we want to tinker with it going forward, that's something that we can do. And I don't discount any issue that's been raised. And I think it's been a very good discussion. But just in the interest of not abruptly taking the program down for the reasons that Mr. Guzman said, and then moving us on to our billion-dollar budget and the weightier concerns, that's what I'd like to do.
And like a lot of issues, right, we're not all going to agree, and that's okay. I mean, people come from different places, different backgrounds, different parts of town. It's okay, you know? Let's just handle this respectfully, diplomatically. We'll make a decision as a board, and then staff will have direction. make a decision as a board, and then staff will have direction and we'll move forward. Ms. Moya?
Mr. President, I'd like to suggest, maybe this, I don't know if this would be something we would take up on the 21st as well, but, but that next year, when we address this issue again, that we try to address it before the property tax notices go out, you know, so that, so that the appraisal district doesn't have to re-notice certain people, should that be the case. That would be my only suggestion for the future.
So I think we'll make a decision, and then we probably, in the preliminary budget, when we do that in February next year, we just need to make a decision, probably at that point, on this item, so that the notice is provided to the appraisal district in advance, if possible. That way we know, we give, and we give a year of notice to people, either if it's in or out. Is that possible?
Yeah, we can make some high-level decisions, approval on the program, and obviously we wouldn't have the actual properties until the application process and timeline, so we could probably build a schedule around that.
But given the numbers that Jerry's talking about, in terms of, it's a pretty small number that are incrementally being added, so it's really a judgment we're making about all the properties that are in there today, commercial and residential, that we have to make a decision on, and we know that the increment each year is pretty small from this point forward. And the historical districts, I don't think are going to affect the tax side at all, so that's really, this is all just about a pretty small number of historical properties. So we'll make a decision on 21st, and then we'll let everybody know, and we'll deal with the...
I just want to clarify, you're going to approve a resolution for modifying the program, and then when you adopt your tax rate in August, you will adopt this ordinance setting the avalium taxes as well as the actual properties themselves.
Right, so that's a very good point, but as far as the resolution, if we, if we choose to vote, if the board chooses to vote down the resolution, basically to say, we're not going to do it, then we would, I think we ought to go with that as far as what we're doing in August, that we're not going to do it. That way, people can know early, we get the message out, and we can let you go back to the billions of dollars that you have to deal with on everything else and not spending more time on this. Okay? Thank you, guests. Y'all, very nice to come here, sorry to keep you so late, we appreciate y'all being here. We'll make some decision on the 21st, so we look, again, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments tonight? Okay, it is 9:50, we are adjourned.